All this meeting of the Amador County Board of Supervisors to order on this Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. The board is met in closed session. Item one, conference with labor negotiators, direction was given to staff. Item three, one of the two cases was no report. An item, that was item three A, and item three B, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, no report. Confidential minutes were approved by the board. And with that, can you all stand and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, unstruck, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. And with that, we'll go to public matters not on the agenda. Discussion item only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the board at this time on any subject within jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff in our committee for report and possible action at subsequent board meetings. There is a three-minute time limit. Mr. Benetti, Chief Probation Officer.
Morning. Am I good?
Oh, there you go.
Just wanted to come over this morning and advise the board of a free tattoo removal program for all of you that need to get rid of your tattoos you may have had when you were younger. April 19th, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the probation department at 675 New York Ranch Road. It's free to anyone. We've had a tattoo removal program in place for quite some years, but it's been for offenders and those involved in that criminal justice system. But we were able to secure a contract and really, while the focus is the folks that we have under our jurisdiction, we're opening it up to everyone. So if I could approach, I'd like to provide you each with a flyer for the event and then answer any questions. I know you have a busy agenda today, but I just wanted to take a moment to come over and let you know about this. If you hadn't heard about it on our Facebook page, I've been over and talked to KBGC as well and did an interview with them about it. So is it okay if I approach and give these?
Not saying I have to get rid of it. I love my mom and tattoos, all right. Okay. Do you know if there's limitations on what?
No, no limitations, no.
Or they can take the tattoos off, though?
No, unless there's a medical limitation of some sort identified by the company we're using. We're using Ink Off Me out of the Valley, other probation departments throughout the state, and other jurisdictions outside of the state have used them. They're all reporting great success. And if they have a limitation, then that would be in place. But ultimately, most programs for men, it's just from the shirt sleeve down, head and neck. Women, it's the high chest, high back. But ultimately, we're opening it up to everyone and anyone that wants one removed. No one is saying you have to, but again, it's available. And sometimes those are barriers to employment, and we're just trying to eliminate those barriers for the populations we deal with. But I would invite all of you to come over. We're going to have a food truck there. Come over there and grab a bite to eat at lunchtime. Check it out. You can walk through the trailer. All right? Any questions?
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Guys, take care.
All right.
Any other public comments this morning? Mr. May?
Good morning.
Morning.
I'll take a moment to speak about three items which are near and dear to my heart. I'm hoping to make them near and dear to the board's heart. Hopefully, you're not heartless. Those items are the dark sky ordinance. I have requested in writing that you reconsider your vote. It went down three to two when it was introduced to the board by the planning committee who had unanimously recommended the passage. It's not too late for you to change your minds and again reconsider the dark sky ordinance. The second item is the whole issue with the sewer that ran through it, the whole nine yards. I'm sure you've seen this latest, this article from Jack Mitchell in the Ledger Dispatch, "A Web of Dirty Politics: What Lies Beneath." And he devotes a lot of time and a lot of, a lot of good ideas and thoughts to what could be, should be done to alleviate this god-awful mess that the citizens of our own are having to endure, particularly those around the Mule Creek area. I have a question for the board. Have you filed suit in the Federal Clean Air, Clean Water Act? I know the group of fishermen have.
I refer that to our counsel to answer that question.
Oh, yes, we have. And I think you've asked for some of those documents. So I think you know that we have filed that case.
Okay, thank you. Last, last thoughts, again, I've provided information to you about the putting on the agenda of the board, a public comment period, a public hearing, so that your constituents can come in and give you ideas about how they would like to see the ARP funds used. Thus far publicly, all I've seen you, that you listed that has been used for is for the $2,000 stipends went to each and every person in the county as, who they were all considered essential workers. So all of them got the $2,000, including the board members.
Not including the board members.
Right.
Not including the board members.
You didn't give $2,000 to yourselves?
I, but it was a.
How did I misread that?
It was a three to five vote, so we did not fund it. So it did not go funding. We did not get the $2,000.
It needed to be a four-fifths vote to fund it.
I see. Okay, so.
You should be happy.
I'll be happier if you decide to have a public hearing relative to the, giving your constituents a chance to express their issues on how that money should be used.
Wasn't there going to be some discussion with the remaining funds? Wasn't that?
Yeah, that still has to be authorized by the board, so there will be discussion on
Yeah, so I think that that will occur, just, you know, in the, in the future. There will be a discussion of how we will use the remaining funds.
That will be at the board level, as we've already had done in the past. Previously, we discussed that issue in an open session. We'll do it again, but in the meantime, our constituents have the ability to talk to us as they are talking to me, and I would imagine the other board members. And the ones that talk to me all say, I want that money, too.
Well, Richard, that's not a public hearing. I'm sorry.
Okay. We're not required to have a public hearing on that.
Not saying you're not required. What I'm saying is, every other agency I've checked with has decided it was worthwhile to get constituent input, and they've had those public hearings. I don't know what you guys are afraid of. Must be something. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
Yes, well, I will say to add on to Mr. May's comment. I think that one article talked about that CDCR should do a wastewater treatment plant for the prison. I think that's one of Jack Mitchell's suggestions. I think it's a very good one. Probably take, get rid of a lot of the problem there.
Well, that's been from day one, and they need to be made to do that by the powers to be, which unfortunately is another state agency, so. Is there anyone on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any further public comments? Hearing none, then we'll go on to approval of the agenda. We will have one item added on to the consent agenda, but approval of our regular agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Supervisor Brown, Supervisor Crew. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries. Approval of item on the consent agenda. We do have one addendum, Waste Management. Approval of an ordinance creating Chapter 7.21 of the Amador County Municipal Code relating to the requirements for the reduction of organic waste disposal and to enact regulations in compliance with Cinnabell SB 1383 for the implementation of food and organics recycled and related solid waste and recycling processing and reporting. The reading was waived on March 22nd, 2022. That'll be item 7M on the consent agenda. And with that.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair, with addition.
Moved by Supervisor Crew, seconded by Supervisor Axe to approve the consent agenda with the addendum. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Most carries. Thank you. Go on to our regular agenda. Item 5A, update by the Amador County Health Officer, Dr. Rita Kerr, on the COVID-19 situation in Amador County. And can we get Dr. Kerr up?
Good morning. It allowed me to unmute. I'll see if it allows me to get on video.
Hold on just a second, Dr. Kerr. Is it, you have your camera on or do you want your camera?
The host needs to allow me to. Thank you. There we go.
There you are.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good morning, board, Amador County. I appreciate the privilege to update you once again about COVID-19 situation in Amador County, or now monthly updates. And COVID activity has improved in Amador County. It has currently reached the lowest level since last spring prior to the Delta surge occurring. Hospital impact is currently minimal. There is one patient, none are Amador County residents. One patient currently hospitalized in Sutter Amador Hospital, who is actually no longer active COVID, but was originally hospitalized for COVID and has continuing ongoing hospitalization. No COVID patients are in the intensive care unit at Sutter Amador Hospital. And to date, 347, which is up two since last month's update. 347 Amador County residents are known to have been hospitalized because of COVID-19. As far as cases and death data, the Amador County webpage data charts are now being updated weekly on Tuesdays. Press releases will continue to be issued, but only as needed rather than weekly going forward. And today, rather than focusing on the cumulative numbers, I'm going to go over the charts and trends. So if the clerk could please put up the bar graph Epi curve, as always. The curve shows the laboratory confirmed cases in blue and probable cases in green. And you can see the huge spike that we had, the surge peaked January 16th through 22nd, and has steadily trended downward since then. Again, you can see, looking back, that we're at those levels that we were last spring prior to that Delta surge, which was kind of the mid-level but very long-prolonged surge that happened over the fall and into the winter months. If you put up the pie charts, it shows the geographic distribution of the cases. And the pie chart on the left, once that comes on screen, is the cumulative total and the geographic areas where those have been. And then currently, we have three active resident cases that are known, and that includes all the confirmed, the probable observed antigen tests and those that have come in and we're still researching, but we know that there, we have lab results for them, and they're currently in suspect. And those are all the new ones over the past 10 days that we know about. Again, these do not include supervised, excuse me, unsupervised home self-tests, which are not required to be reported to public health. Of the probable cases that we have that are not included in this chart, we have had about 600 so far year-to-date 2022, and 73% of those have been in school-aged children because the school district has a robust supervised antigen testing program that has been in place since the beginning of the school year last fall. Mule Creek State Prison is down to only one currently active case, and out there in the inmate population, they peaked at over 400 cases active in mid-January. Since the last update report last month, two additional Amador resident deaths have been confirmed because of COVID-19. Both of those were unvaccinated women, one in her 60s and one in her 80s. The total confirmed COVID deaths in Amador County residents to date is 77 and nine Mule Creek State Prison inmate deaths. Public health offers our sympathy to all who are grieving the loss of a loved one due to COVID-19. As far as the vaccine update goes, even with new variants emerging, being fully vaccinated, fully vaccinated and getting a booster when it's time remains the safest way to prevent serious illness, hospitalization, and death from COVID. While over 10,000 residents of Amador have had boosters, the highest priority remains for those who are still unvaccinated to get protected. COVID vaccines are available and free for everyone age five and older. 58.9% of the population age five and older in Amador County have completed their primary series of the COVID vaccine, and 70.9% have had at least one dose. 29.1% of the population age five and older in Amador County have not had any doses of COVID vaccine, which is down half a percent since my last update. The age group breakdown of those who remain unvaccinated is as follows. 82% of 5 to 11-year-olds, 52% of 12 to 17-year-olds, 47 and a half percent of 18 to 49-year-olds, 15% of 50 to 64-year-olds, and 4 and a half percent of those age 65 and older. The average first doses given daily were only about five to seven over the past few weeks. Timing for the first booster dose for those that have completed a primary series but have not yet had a booster is at least two months since their single dose J and J, or over five months since the second dose of either Pfizer or Moderna vaccine. Everyone who is ages 12 or older is recommended to get that first booster dose. Persons who have immune compromise are recommended to get additional vaccine doses or possibly the long-acting monoclonal antibody injection, Ebukel, and should speak with their doctor about recommendations specific to them. A new recommendation since the end of March is that anyone age 50 and older may get a second vaccine booster if it has been at least four months since their last dose of vaccine. Additional booster doses are really most important for those over 65 or those who have underlying conditions that put them at higher risk for severe COVID illness. Mixing and matching the option to choose a different vaccine for your booster than you got for your primary series is available, and in fact, is recommended for those who have received J and J to get an mRNA-type vaccine for the booster dose. No-cost COVID vaccine clinics at the Health and Human Services Building, Suite 500, in the back entrance, have now changed to Tuesday mornings from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. and Friday afternoons, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. All three brands of COVID-19 vaccine are available there for any dose, including for children and boosters. You may visit myturn.ca.gov to schedule an appointment at those vaccine clinics. Masks are required because it is a healthcare setting. Those with appointments are prioritized. Walk-ins may be accommodated, but must arrive a half hour before the clinic end time to register and have time to get their dose and the required observation period afterwards. For boosters, please bring your vaccination card, a photo of it, or a digital vaccine verification record showing the dates of your previous doses and what you received. Retail pharmacies also continue to offer COVID-19 vaccines, and you may check vaccines.gov for the pharmacy availability. The COVID-19 Mobile Vaccine Team continues to provide vaccinations for homebound individuals who may schedule a nurse home visit by calling public help at 209-223-6407. Last week, CDPH updated guidance for the general public regarding quarantine and the definition of close contacts. This new guidance does not apply in specified high-risk settings such as healthcare and congregate facilities. A close contact is now defined as someone who has been sharing the same indoor airspace that is at home, a clinic waiting room, a meeting room, airplane, et cetera, for a cumulative total of 15 minutes or more over a 24-hour period. For example, three individual exposures lasting five minutes each for a total of 15 minutes would count. During an infected person's infectious period, because of aerosol transmission and increased contagiousness of recent COVID variants, the six-foot distance rule no longer applies. Close contacts, however, no longer need to stay home to quarantine. However, they should test within three to five days after last exposure, wear a well-fitting mask around others for a total of 10 days after the exposure, especially in indoor settings, and when near those who are at high risk for severe COVID disease. They are strongly encouraged to get vaccinated or boosted, and if symptoms develop, they should test and stay home. If the test result is positive, they need to follow isolation recommendations, which have not changed. I will go ahead and review those here. Stay home for at least five days if you've tested positive, five days after the start of symptoms, or after the date of the first positive test if you have no symptoms. Isolation can end after five days if symptoms are not present or are resolving, and a test, preferably an antigen test, collected on day five or later is negative. If you're unable to test, choosing not to test, or continue testing positive after day five, isolation can end on day 10, as long as you're fever-free for 24 hours without having to use fever-reducing medication. If fever continues, isolation needs to continue until 24 hours after the fever resolves. If symptoms other than fever are not getting better, continue to isolate until symptoms are resolving or until after day 10. According to CDPH masking guidance, infected persons should wear a well-fitting mask around others for a total of 10 days, especially in indoor settings, including at home, to hopefully prevent spreading it to your household members. At-home testing options are available. Visit covidtests.gov to order free at-home test kits. If you test positive with an at-home test, please follow those self-isolation guidelines and inform your close contacts. The OptumServe no-cost testing site at the Health and Human Services Building off Lower Ridge Road remains open on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays with hours now of 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Again, masks are required because it's a healthcare setting. Please pre-register online at LHI.Care, or you may call 1-888-634-1123 to register for an appointment. Optum Serve is now offering rapid antigen testing as well as collecting swabs to send to the lab for PCR. Those with appointments are prioritized, and walk-ins will be accommodated as space allows. Residents who test positive for COVID-19, who are at elevated risk for severe illness, should promptly call their doctor to see if they qualify for one of the outpatient treatments, such as the new oral medications, Paxlovid and Molnupiravir, or injectable monoclonal antibody treatments. Those treatments all work best when taken as soon as possible after symptom onset. Residents who cannot receive a COVID-19 vaccination or are not expected to mount an adequate immune response may be eligible for Ebukel and should talk to their provider about that. That injectable medication is used to prevent COVID-19 infections and is now available locally through the Sutter Amador Infusion Center. Amador County has received confirmation of the more contagious BA.2 strain of Omicron circulating locally. As BA.2 is becoming the dominant circulating strain of the virus, residents most vulnerable to severe illness from COVID-19, including those who are not vaccinated, immunocompromised, have underlying health conditions, or have a lot of exposures to others that work or in the community, should take measures to reduce their risk. Steps to reduce risk include getting fully vaccinated and boosted when eligible, wearing a well-fitting medical mask or N95 when in indoor public settings, and getting tested before and after gatherings or travel. Event planners, operators, and attendees may use the Safe and Smart Events Playbook that is linked on the amador.gov/COVID-19 webpage to plan and participate in safe and smart in-person events. Anyone who feels ill, even with mild symptoms, should get tested and stay home while awaiting the results. If you don't feel great, please isolate. And I'd be happy to address any questions at this time.
Remember questions?
So just for clarification, Dr. Kerr, the clinics are going to be on Tuesdays and Fridays, so Tuesdays 8:30 to 11:30 a.m., and then Friday, 1:00 to 4:00 p.m.?
That is correct.
Go to My Turn?
Yes, to schedule any dose, including that second booster dose, is now eligible for scheduling.
And then those that had the J and J, they're being advised to get the Moderna as, or Pfizer as the booster?
That is the preferential recommendation, yes. The mix-and-match strategy tends to provide more robust immunity, to get higher peak levels of the antibodies, and it lasts a little bit longer. to get higher peak levels of the antibodies, and it lasts a little bit longer as well.
Thank you.
Dr. Kerr, I have a couple of questions. This is Supervisor Forrester. You say the fifty-plus, it's brand-new that they can get a second booster dose if it has been at least four months? Is that to say then that every four months you should get a booster dose?
No, at this time, it's called a permissive recommendation that basically the authorization has been put out there that providers may now provide second booster doses to anyone aged fifty and older. And the interval that we have to wait to administer that dose in that population is at least four months. There are no recommendations for boosters beyond the second booster dose at this point. The FDA met last week to review a lot of data and has to meet again because they did not land on any specific recommendations at this time for ongoing booster doses beyond that second booster. The one caveat to that is that immunocompromised population, very specific and small subset of individuals who really need to talk to their own physician because there are additional dose recommendations, there's a specific schedule for them. And again, that monoclonal antibody Ebukel that is long-acting has a role in that population and is part of that mix of strategies that can be deployed to maximize protection for that group.
Okay, thank you. One more question. You indicated the, if you were in close contact to someone who got COVID, then the recommend, one of the recommendations was to get vaccinated or boosted. What happens if a person has never been vaccinated and ends up being asymptomatic with COVID and they get vaccinated? Is there a health risk there?
There is no health risk there. The only health risk would be if they entered, you know, a clinic unmasked and potentially spread to others. But for the individual, no, there's no harm, and that has actually been well-studied for people who got vaccinated during a time when they had been exposed and were incubated or just on the verge of testing positive. The vaccinations cannot cause a positive test. It's just a timing issue. We hear this every year with the flu as well. Oh, I got the flu shot and then I got the flu. No, you were exposed to the flu before you got the shot, and then you happened to be incubating. It really, the vaccines for COVID at this time are not effective for post-exposure prophylaxis. We have heard stories from individuals who came in to get their shot because they were exposed, and unfortunately, it's really not effective that way. That's where the role of the monoclonal antibodies can come in. But at this point, none of them are being used to prevent infection, but they are used if you do test positive to lessen the course and severity of infection for those people who are at risk.
Okay, because I have read in several articles about people who were, who had COVID, were asymptomatic and got the COVID shot and then had adverse reactions. That's not the case, though?
It's not a, it has been studied, and there's, there always can be individual anecdotal, you know, individual experiences, but on a population basis, no, it is not considered a risk. The prior recommendation was to complete the quarantine period before getting vaccinated or boosted if you'd been exposed, and that was really to prevent somebody who could have been positive from, you know, infecting others in the healthcare system. Certainly, if you want to wait that ten days that you were advised to wait before and then wear your mask and go get your shot, that would be fine. As I said, it's not going to act as a post-exposure prophylaxis, but I think the message is because the recommendation for quarantine has really gone away now because of the more contagious variants incubating so quickly that by the time you're notified you're a close contact, the recommendation is just go get tested and wear your mask for ten days, but you don't have to be confined to your home. It's really up to your individual worksite whether or not they would restrict you from coming to work. And again, if you work in a high-risk healthcare or congregate setting, those restrictions do remain in place there.
Thank you. Board questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Kerr. This is Supervisor Neto. Does public health keep a record of adverse reactions people have?
Of our own, the people that we vaccinated who contact us, if they contact us to state that they had an adverse reaction, we enter it into the VAERS system. That's where the official recording of adverse reactions occurs.
So do you have a record of adverse reactions in the county that you keep?
Again, if the individual contacts us, we open their record, which is all electronic at this point, and we enter it into the VAERS system. And so that report would have to be pulled out of the VAERS system.
Yeah, but my question is, do you have a record that we can look at of adverse reactions that happen in Amador County at the Public Health Department?
Not, we don't house that data source. That data is housed at the VAERS.
Could you house it so people know in Amador County, like, how many reactions that people are having here?
We would have to work with IT to build a separate data repository and probably duplicate, enter anything that happened of that sort. Again, even the case data is not housed in a separate county repository. That is a state system that we interface with.
I would, I mean, I think it'd be pretty simple to do it in Amador County. I mean, if you get that information, just keep a file. Information I'd like, I'd like to know.
So if we hear about the adverse reaction, if they contact us to say, I got my shot at your clinic on Tuesday and I'm having a fever now, or I'm having, I had to visit the emergency room because, I don't know, a headache that wouldn't go away or something like that, we would enter that into the VAERS system. If they don't contact us, but they contact their own physician, then their own physician would enter it into the VAERS system. If they don't contact their own physician or us, but they only visit the emergency room, then the emergency room doctor would enter it into the VAERS system. So I think my reluctance here, Supervisor Neto, is that if public health builds a system for what we hear about, it would still be an incomplete database, and it would be extra work to ask already overburdened healthcare providers to enter things not only into the VAERS system but into a custom Amador County system as well. Does that make sense?
Excuse me, Dr. Kerr, let me jump in. Can't we query the VAERS system and find out who had an adverse reaction or not and just create a report, a piece of paper with that information on it?
I would have to look into whether or not we can cut VAERS data to the county level at this point.
That's my next question, Frank. I thought that's what you were asking.
That's my next question, yeah.
Not to create an actual database, but to, because that data exists. So do we have the ability to query it, or can we ask somebody at the state? Could you run this query and give us that information?
Well, so the VAERS is a national database, number one. It's not a state database. However, I think it's also very important to note that VAERS is a passive surveillance system. It is not a verified adverse reaction occurred system. It is to allow anyone, including individuals, to log in and say, I had something happen after my vaccination. And then what, how it works is that there's an entire team of people who look at everything that's there, categorize things, prioritize things, and do further investigation when they see a sentinel event that is of concern and looks unusual. And they reach out, interview individuals, interview their clinicians, collect medical records, and make a determination. None of that happens at the front end. So doing, again, doing a VAERS query is a very broad brush. And actually, I'm going to go ahead and give this example because this just hit the news yesterday. The question of myocarditis incidence after vaccination for COVID, particularly with the mRNA vaccines, Moderna more so than Pfizer, okay, became a safety signal many, many months ago. And it's been watched, and it's been studied, and there has been additional precautions. The interval between doses for young adult men has actually been an option of waiting eight weeks to potentially lessen that risk after the second dose. Yesterday's study actually has called into question, and it was published in The Lancet, which is a well-respected medical journal, has called into question whether or not this is truly an increased incidence related to this vaccine. And it looks like possibly no, that really the incidence of myocarditis is on par with the incidence of post-vaccination myocarditis for many other vaccines. The one vaccine that has traditionally shown this to be an increased risk was smallpox vaccine. Smallpox vaccine is not generally given to most people in the population at this point. It is still given to those entering military service, which skews toward young adult men. And so it's really very challenging to sort out, is it because, is it higher in that population because so many more of that population are getting vaccinated relative to other age and demographic categories? So anyway, long story short, we are continuing to study all of these adverse events, trying to certainly raise consciousness about potential safety signals like the pause on J and J about a year ago when the concern for clotting came up. The myocarditis risk mitigating by lengthening the interval between doses and realizing that it is well-established that it's higher risk to get a more serious case of myocarditis following actual COVID infection, more so than post-vaccination. So when we're talking about adverse events, really studying this at a broad population level is the most appropriate way to look for and mitigate safety issues, potential safety issues of adverse events from vaccination.
I don't want to get too stuck on this issue, so are we that satisfactory? The only thing I see is sometimes it depends, the results of the studies kind of favor those who fund the studies, too. Hopefully, the manufacturers aren't the ones funding it. I have one more, just one more quick question. The, how long does the, if you have COVID, how long will it show up in your test? Sixty days, ninety days, ten days?
The antigen tests tend to get, become negative more quickly. There are a few people who will shed beyond ten days, but most not beyond twenty days. The molecular PCR tests or the nucleic acid amplification tests, the ones that get sent out to the lab, have been shown to be intermittently positive. They can be negative, and then they can turn positive again because non-viable, small fragments of the virus RNA can continue to be shed from cells in the system. And that is the, the time period that's been established now is ninety days. And so the recommendation is, in general, not to use the molecular, send-out lab tests for ninety days after a prior infection.
Yeah, that's my only concern, is how is somebody supposed to travel if you need a negative test and you can show up for ninety days?
Generally, most folks can get a letter that says they had it on, you know, this date, and they were cleared and released from isolation, and that letter can be provided in lieu of a negative test for travel purposes to most places. Hawaii, I know is one. Yes.
A letter from their physician?
Their physician, or if they were, if they never sought medical care, they can contact their local health department to get that clearance letter.
All right, thank you. Any other board questions? Any public comments? Any questions on Zoom?
No, not at this time.
All right, Dr. Kerr, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right, see you in a month.
Okay.
All right, with that, we'll go to Ivan, Item Five B, Chamber of Commerce. Discussion of Possible Action Relative to a Presentation of Annual Report by the Chamber outlining their accomplishments in the last year and their proposed budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. On Zoom, I guess, or, oh, you guys are doing it, okay.
Ivan in person.
I was looking for Mr. Gidi, but.
Nice to be live and in person, right?
Yes, it is.
Yes, it is.
Morning.
Good morning, Chairman Forrester, members of the board. My name is Matt Toma, recently elected president of the Amador County Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here today with Julie Lyman, our newly hired part-time, we hired her as an office manager, but she's assumed the role of assistant executive director, at least for now, and she's doing an amazing job at the chamber. As many of you know, you know, with COVID and everything like that, we got hit pretty hard, and I've had part-time staff at the chamber, and it's been difficult to, you know, to keep it up and operating properly. We've moved to a new location at forty North Highway forty-nine. We're across the highway from Mel's, the entrance to Mel's Restaurant here in Jackson. We're getting new signage put up. We feel it's a great location. It's got both Main Street frontage and also direct highway access for, you know, people coming in on the weekends and during the week and that type of stuff. I'm also here with some of our other board members who all own and operate businesses here in Amador County and believe in the power of a healthy chamber in today's business and tourism climate. It's nice to be surrounded by a board with such energy and enthusiasm and wanting to see the chamber get back to a good working climate, you know, with the county and the businesses here. Here today, we have Kevin Barnett. Kathleen Harmon was here, but she had to leave. Susan Manning's here. Some of our other board members are Sharon Lundgren, Rich Hoffman, Paul Malinelli Jr., Joey Gidi, Abra Teague, Todd Daley, Jim Wilmarth, Katie Dunn, and Beth Bernard. First off, I want to thank you and this board for considering our TOT funds request and the TOT support that you have given us over the years. Without it, we wouldn't be able to offer some of the benefits that a healthy chamber of commerce has on the business and tourism sectors here in the county. I also want to personally thank Supervisor Axe, Supervisor Crew, at least since I've been on the board the last few years, for their representation at our monthly meetings. It's extremely beneficial to our board to have their input and direction from the government side of things to help us make decisions moving forward and kind of to know what's going on in the county. The Chamber of Commerce has been serving Amador County literally for decades and strives to be an advocate for business, tourism, and to help stimulate vibrant economy, retaining jobs, and helping to create strong communities. Your Amador County Chamber of Commerce offers a way for businesses and organizations to come together, network, and help themselves and our communities grow. We provide businesses an opportunity not only to network with one another for upcoming events, but also to meet other members of the business community, which is also healthy for good economic growth. A few of the things that the chamber offers are simple things, like we've now updated and improved our community calendar and our website, which benefits not only businesses and tourists alike to view and plan for upcoming events around the county. It's always been a pet peeve of mine to get our community calendar back together so organizations and other groups can view to see when other people are having functions and get everybody on the same page, not to conflict with everybody. It seems like that's a regular occurrence around here. We've also developed a strategic planning committee to put together things like seminars during the year. Then we'll be providing small businesses from simple things like how to apply for small business loans, navigating workman's comp insurance policies, HR responsibilities, and dealing with the COVID environment. With that said, last year, the chamber partnered with the county health department to help businesses navigate COVID by providing PPE and other means to help them stay afloat. Speaking of COVID, as you are all well aware, COVID has played a large role in how businesses have operated over the last two years, and the chamber is no different. Some of our larger fundraisers coming from gatherings, mixers, events like Business Person of the Year and our Golden Award Night. We've been struggling to keep staff. Without these fundraisers, we've been struggling to keep staff. The business is fully staffed and people available for tourists and the like. Our need to field phone calls and emails regarding tourist-related topics has increased greatly in the last few years as more and more people are traveling to our great county. Our membership numbers dropped during COVID down to around two hundred businesses, but with the help of Julie and other board members, we're working our way back up to hopefully three hundred active businesses and, which is where we continue to provide COVID and continue the upward trend in membership. A great sign of this has been the attendance numbers at some of our last mixers, showing the business communities ready to get back together. Showing the business communities ready to get back together and get back to work to help make Amador County be both business and tourism strong. And that comes to the main reason why we're here today. Requesting additional TOT funds from the county in order for us to attract a qualified individual for the position of an exec, a full-time executive, executive director, excuse me. Julie being in the office to operate the chamber on, on the daily, as what we call the, the back of the house, taking care of the needs. And a full-time executive director to go out and meet with businesses and provide some of their needs with us moving forward. Being able to field calls, handle walk-ins and dealing with these tourresses, tourists, excuse me, and organizations is vital to a healthy chamber and healthy economy here in the county. Our quest today would be for eighty thousand dollars in TOT funds from the county. To help balance our projected budget. Reaching our goal to build a healthy and vibrant Chamber of Commerce, hiring a qualified executive director to help us move in this positive direction. We see ourselves growing to not only help attract more and more tourism to the county, but also to help businesses grow and operate smartly. And with that, I'd like to have Julie Lyman, who's only been with us for months now? Yeah, just say a few words and kind of give her some of her experiences on, on how the chambers. Vibrant to tourism in the county and some of the phone calls she's been taking.
Get right in front of the mic.
Sorry about that. I prepared some things to speak, but Matt touched most of them. So the biggest thing I wanted to share with you is the, the visitor center. I am helping grow the membership, trying to get back up to our three hundred plus membership that was before COVID. And we actively doing that. The Strategic Planning Committee is working hard to regain what our focus is as a chamber, and I'm excited to be a part of that. The visitor center that we're recreating there on the road frontage on forty-nine has been very active. A lot of people calling in with questions about our county, and I think it's important to have that staff so that people know where to go. When you reach out to a new place, you usually reach out to a name, you know, like the Chamber of Commerce. And so I've been receiving a lot of phone calls for all sorts of silly questions, but they're important to the people that are coming to our community if they don't know where to go or what to do. Recently, the Blue Door Bakery doesn't have signage up with their hours or their phone number. I've received quite a few phone calls of people that love what they serve there and so they've called. Last week, I got the opportunity to walk over for someone, find out their hours, order their cinnamon bun for the next morning. And re, get back to them. And, you know, they're really excited about that kind of service that somebody in the office could give them and help them that might know a little bit about our community. I also have helped people plan their hiking trips and their where to stay and what to eat. And so I do think that the chamber is a vital part of connecting our tourists to our community. And so I'm grateful that you guys are here considering our request for more TOT funds to keep doing what we're doing.
I just want to say thank you again, you guys, for giving us the opportunity to request these funds. And thank you again so much for your support over the years. It definitely means a lot to us and we couldn't operate the way we have been without it. We think it's important that the county and the chamber not only support each other, but to make sure we're all on the same page moving forward. And thank you guys again, really appreciate it.
Thank you. Board questions? Go ahead, Pat.
All right. Pat, I see three big numbers in there that I saw the county allocation. And then I saw the expense with that ninety-four thousand for payroll. Does that in projected to have a full-time executive director and Julie?
That's correct. That's, that's what we've budgeted, correct.
And most importantly, probably, I see fifty-eight thousand for membership renewals. Would that put you at the three hundred level? Is that assuming three hundred members?
Yes, yes. And, and actually, we're hoping for, for a little bit more of that, Pat. That, that's to get us back to where we feel, based on the two hundred we have now. Based on just, like I say, some of the mixers and some of the excitement we're seeing in the, in the business community, some of the calls that Julie's been fielding. That would get us back to that three hundred member number, yeah. And obviously want to keep growing that.
And if we give you a one-time shot. And say you make twenty thousand dollars, then we could reduce our commitment as you get more successful? This is a hand up?
Sure, sure.
We're not making a commitment forever, is?
Correct, right.
That's all I had.
What's your dues, just for clarification?
They range, they range from one fifty up to, you can become a membership of a sponsored membership that goes beyond that. But based on how many employees you have, an individual would be one fifty. I think I reached out to all of you as individuals. And then you could also join as a, as a business that had how many employees. So it could be like three hundred, it could be two fifty, based on how many employees you have. So our probably most, most popular is in the two to three hundred range, based on size of business.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Axe, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I, Matt, I guess I'm looking at. Finishes for twenty twenty-one, the total expense was about seventy-seven thousand. And then what you're projecting for this year. Is about a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, so almost an increase of over a hundred thousand, just slightly over a hundred thousand dollars. And I guess fifty-seven thousand of that will be for wages, but. It's not clear exactly what, you know, what your goal or mission is. It'd be nice to have something in writing, you know, for this presentation or for the future. And then also, you know, I, I understand that you get calls for tourism and things like that, but we do have a tourist organization too. So I, I don't mind you fielding them and us paying for that, but. You know, the question is, is, you know, they're, you know, we're kind of. Getting in each other's lanes, so to speak. I like the idea of you doing strategic planning and working, you know. Committee, workman's comp navigation and those types of things for businesses. Cause I think that supports businesses, that's types of, types of things I would like to see. I think there are other things too that.
Absolutely, and that's what our strategic planning.
Advocate for, rather than just, you know, focusing on tourism. Okay, so I think better clarification would be needed, you know, what? That additional funding, a hundred thousand dollars is going to go toward.
Yeah, that's, that's mostly that we've come up with is, is to hire a qualified, what we feel is a qualified executive director, a full-time person to have at the office. To do some of the things you talked about with businesses and also to, to field a lot of the, you know, when, when you go to a, a town out of, out of state or wherever. If you're looking for, you know, tourist advice, you, you will typically call the Chamber of Commerce.
Oh, I, I understand that, you know, and I don't think that, you know. Not everybody thinks so, the Council of Tourism, but.
Right, right. And I think there's a big opportunity Supervisor Axe for the Chamber of Commerce and the Council of Tourism to, to really work together. You know, I know it's been kind of two separate entities over the years and there's, I'm not saying bad blood or any, or anything like that, but they've kind of been worked in, in separate directions and separately. And I, I really think there's a really good opportunity to, to come together and, and, and work together on, on some common ground, for sure, for sure. I think we had discussed last year at the same meeting, the fact that, you know, they, they do a lot of outreach outside the county and stuff like that. And then once they get here, they start looking at the, at the chamber for information and, and, you know, that type of stuff, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of look at different missions for each. I mean, yours is focused on business, theirs is focused on tourism.
Correct.
I would, I'm not even going to talk about working together. We've tried that and when, when you two agencies work that out, that'd be great. But what you're asking for, I've been talking to my C O via text and we have budgeted forty thousand for the chamber. The ACT gets a hundred and one thousand five hundred. What is the amount of TOT? I know everything was, sales tax and TOT is larger than expected this year.
Yeah, I don't have that off the top of my head right now.
But we, the TOT has gone up from what it was projected to be.
It has.
So there might be enough money. I mean, I know the overage usually goes into the general fund, but we could devote. Some of that to the chamber. Or more. I don't know if it's forty thousand or what that number is right now.
Yeah, I don't know what the, what the total is that we've gotten for this, this year, but it's a general tax. You can do with it what you want.
But the, the increase, I know that's why we took it before the voters to say that we went from six to ten percent for that increase. The intent was for it to go to tourism-related and maybe you could throw that, the chamber in there too, so. Myself, I realize we can use that money for whatever we want, but you took it to the voters and they spoke loud and clear to me.
I respond to one thing you said, Supervisor Forrester, just about the difference between the two entities. And although the chamber does focus on business, in a community like ours where business, a huge part of our business is tourism. I think that we definitely fall in the category of still working with the businesses and the tourism connected to their businesses.
Understood, thank you. Supervisor Renato?
I had a question, I, I think you may have answered, what they received from the county last year, was that forty thousand?
Yes, it's budgeted for forty thousand this year.
Yeah. And that's what they received last year too. I guess one concern I'd have is even if TOT is up this year. If we go ahead and give you extra money for that position, you know, that's going to be an ongoing cost. How would you fund it? You know, I mean, if your membership doesn't come up enough. And then our TOT drops and we're. We'd be drawing money out of general fund or somewhere, trying to make that funding.
Well, that's Supervisor Renato, that's like any business, you, you adapt, you know, to the, to the changing times, whether you, you know, you cut hours, you, you cut salaries, you look for somebody else. You know, that type of stuff. But yeah, our hopes right now is to get, we've got a lot of energy in the chamber right now. And our hope right now is to find that good person. And you guys all know that good, good people are har, A, hard to find and, and they're a little pricey, you know, type of thing. So just to get us heading in the right direction, for sure. Keep us going in the right direction.
I would think Julie probably did a very good job in what she's doing and.
She is.
I'm not sure you need a full-time director there. It'd probably be nice to have somebody there that could field calls. I would agree with that.
Well, again, and keep in mind, Julie is part-time. She's not full-time, so.
I heard that, yeah.
Yeah, to try to find somebody to, to, you know, to keep the office open, so when, when people, we do get the walk-ins, we do get the phone calls, we do get the emails and that type of stuff. To have a real person there for them to talk to and, and answer.
She's a real person.
She is.
I know.
Any other comments from the board?
I think if we've got the opportunity, that we should give the chamber a chance to get up off the deck. Not just get them, we get on their knees with forty, but give them a chance to see if they make this work. And I think if you have a full-time director who can say, get the membership to five hundred, which it was at one time, are pretty close.
That's the goal.
Yeah, that they would almost be self-sufficient. So this isn't, in my view, a forever or like the hundred thousand we give to ACT. And actually, what have they done? I haven't heard from them in a couple of years and they still get a hundred thousand. This is a viable project we can identify and they've got some reasonable goals. And they're back in the county seat, by the way.
I'd like to take some public comment right now.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Is there any public comment? Susan? Morning.
Good morning, Susan Manning, and I would like to ask for your full support. And one of the things that we have found to really make our wildlife group successful, which is so simple, we answer the phone. When you have an emergency, you need assistance, we answer the phone. So that's one of the things that we're asking of you is that we have a full-time person there because the chamber is representing Amador County. So we really do need a full-time executive director there to help people, to encourage people to come. And if there's nobody answering the phone, that kind of gives the wrong message about Amador County. And as you see, you have a great volunteer team here of businesses helping businesses. And I consider myself to be an old pro, but I have to say I'm learning new things all the time through our networking. That help me as a person who's working with two nonprofits. So I really encourage you to please give us your full support because this is a really worthwhile. Group of hard-working volunteers and we need a full-time person to represent Amador County. Thank you.
Realize what you're saying. The executive director in a lot of ways becomes the face of the Chamber of Commerce. They need to get that phone answered, but they, they can't be in the office all the time. So the other option is to hire an administrative person. That just increases your costs. So I would say that they have to be kind of like us, that you don't always answer your phone, but you get back to somebody within a reasonable amount of time, which is like within twenty-four hours.
Absolutely. And you have to understand that there are some people who are not going to leave a message because they're going to just go on. So as much as possible, we want to be able to answer that phone. But yes, taking messages is also viable. And an executive director is hard to find. You want to find somebody who's passionate and you have to pay them all these days. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Good morning.
Good morning, gentlemen. Sherry Curtis from Up Country. I've been here for a long time, over twenty years. And even before COVID hit, I have seen the increased request for businesses. Through the chamber and other organizations to come to government and ask for more money. What I see is a trend in our government to start blending public monies with private businesses on their behalf. And I'm not against private business. I think it's well deserved to be in our county. But we keep coming up with different councils, whether it's tourism or economic development or whatever you want to name it. We've been increasing over the years, the cost to the public for private businesses. I think that everybody has been hurt with COVID, not just tourism. Tourism and the chamber can overlap. And I think somehow they need to combine. They have maybe a different focus totally, but they still are there. Tourism is to bring business. And. The business community under the chamber is trying to help businesses become better business people. To turn a better profit maybe, so they can stay in business. I just really, with the disaster we saw from the storms this year. And the increase in crime that we're seeing, that our public costs are going up. So when you decide how much you can do on your budget. I think it would be worthwhile to consider, we have new costs coming to our county as well. And I love our business, a lot of people here are good. That isn't it. It's just what is public purpose, public funding supposed to go to versus all the. Private business needs, you know, which I understand they have them too. So just please consider that in your donation. Because I don't think we need to increase it. They have been here asking for money every year before COVID or not. So they've kind of depended on the public monies to keep them going. Thank you. I'm coming here as a taxpayer.
Good morning, Kathleen Harmon. I am here today as a member of the Executive Committee for the Chamber of Commerce. It may have already been said, but every county has a Chamber of Commerce. And we are the point of contact for people that do not know this community. I know that people do call ACT, but it's because they have developed relationship with ACT, not because that's what they're going to find in the phone book. When you visit and you don't know your area, you contact the Chamber of Commerce. We have been a vital part of this community and we have had our missteps. I've been on the board off and on for twenty years. And we have done it wrong and we've done it right. But I ask you to remember that this county needs a vital Chamber of Commerce. It needs it because we are the point of contact for people that don't know Amador County. And we get a lot of press for how beautiful we are and people will call and say what's going on, whatever. We just have to have a vital chamber. We just have to have a vital chamber, so I ask you to support us, and thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Want to Zoom?
No.
Um, I'd like to make a suggestion here, since we don't have all of the budget numbers, I'd like to hold off one meeting on making a decision on this, and come back with the hard numbers, so we can see where we're at with the increase in TOT.
Yeah, well, um, yeah, TOT is, is up significantly. Uh, we're talking about sixty thousand dollars at least, but I would, I don't have a, uh, I don't have a final number.
And we won't get the fourth quarter figures till July one, right? Or they got thirty days after that.
We are already at a hundred percent of what we've budgeted.
Yeah.
So, and we're two and a half months away from the end of the fiscal year.
So, I don't know, if, if, that's my suggestion, if you're comfortable that there's going to be sufficient TOT to honor this request.
Yeah, I wouldn't. Do you have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I still want to make some comments here.
Go ahead.
Well, I, I would like there to be, again, a description on paper of how, how the county funds are going to be used by the chamber. And also, you know, you're, you're talking about increasing membership and a funding, really a funding development plan, should, we should see something like that. And I would like to hear about what the TOT is going to be, and also, let's hear from ACT as well, okay? Because, again, it just seems like we're green-lighting tourism from the chamber.
Well, we've been green-lighting ACT for ten years.
Yeah, and I think they've, they've been coming here all the time, and you know that's, you know that to be true.
I know. I'm just telling you.
We know that, we, let's let them come here and present, you know, we've, we've gone through a pandemic, tourism kind of took a hit, all right? You know, it's very clear what they were supposed to do.
I just wanted to add that, you know, we, we've, ACT has also done a great job to kill Dandelion Days, so it's kind of a, you know, we, they over-advertised it, and everybody, so we need to find a conjecture, you know, get to both of the, both of them together, because they're both using the same TOT funds. So, we need to have a voice from ACT of what their future plans are, too.
Well, I would disagree with your comment on Dandelion Days, I, I think it shows how well they, they, uh, while they're doing their job, but I think what killed Dandelion Days was the Ryan family was worn out, and the road.
Well, it was just too many people at one time.
That's right. Supervisor Renato?
Daffodil Hill you're talking about, Dandelion.
Excuse me, daffodil, excuse me, daffodil.
I was wondering, how'd that happen?
Sorry?
Wrong flower.
You had me all messed up.
Okay.
Flower in the weed.
All right, Supervisor Renato, did you have anything else?
No, I, um, the question you had as far as how much money additional is in TOT, I think that's pretty pertinent. I think what Ms. Curtis brought up, I do agree with, um, this is transient occupancy tax money that comes in from tourism, that's why it goes back towards the chamber and ACT. Um, I think if, on a one-time basis, I think I'd be willing to look at doing it, if the funding is there. I want to make it very clear, it's not an ongoing deal, so if TOT drops, those funding sources are going to drop. Um, I think that has to be very clear.
I think they understand that.
Yeah.
Well, you kind of contradicted yourself in your statement, you said it's one-time funding, but then if TOT drops, it'll drop.
Well, it's one-time funding for now, and if your TOT stays up, maybe, maybe they'll get it again, but I don't, I don't want to say it's something we're going to be doing on an ongoing basis and have TOT drop, and they're saying, hey, you know, you're supposed to be providing this funding, we're going to lose our executive director.
Yeah.
Kind of almost like seed money, saying, hey, we'll help, he will help you get to that base, but then you got to do it on your own, to a certain degree.
So, is Supervisor Axe, would you be comfortable with, with voting on this today, or would you like to wait until you get some of that information?
I think we should just wait for the information, so we know that we have it in the budget, and then also, what are, what are people planning on doing with the money?
Mm-hmm.
If, if it's a one-time thing, that's it, then it goes back to this, and you want to put that as part of your motion, okay, we can do that.
Uh, Mr. Riley, are you going to be able to make a reasonable estimate on, uh, the projections for TOT?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Thomas, do you feel that you can come back to us with, with that information that Supervisor Axe is requesting?
I do, I do, yeah.
Uh, what's your timeframe, maybe thirty days?
Uh, less than that, I would say, within a couple of weeks.
By our next meeting, you think?
Yes.
That's doable?
Absolutely.
And maybe you, did you talk to Julie about that? Okay, I'm gonna, is there any additional comments from anyone in the audience or board? Okay, then we'll hold this off for one meeting, bring it back at the next meeting with more information, and the chamber will bring back data, and contact ACT also, and to present. Correct? Okay, thank you. Looking at what we can accomplish here, I'm going to move, it's okay with the board, item five D, the sheriff's office, so our sheriff's not sitting back here the whole time. Sheriff Redmond?
It's, uh, item five D, discussion of possible action relative to adoption of an uncodified ordinance approving a military equipment use policy pursuant to Assembly Bill four eighty, and it includes four different facets in that bill. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, Board. So, I want to start off with, uh, kind of laying some groundwork on this, uh, Assembly Bill, and how this, uh, Assembly Bill, uh, came to fruition. The acquisition of military equipment and its deployment in our communities adversely impacts the public safety and welfare, including increased, increased risk of civilian deaths, significant risk to civilian rights and civil liberties, and physical and psychological well-being, an encumbrance of significant financial costs. Military equipment is more frequently deployed in low-income, black-and-brown communities, meaning the risk and impacts of police militarization are experienced most acutely in marginalized communities. So, in my opinion, the purpose of this bill is, we saw, within the last two years, the civil unrest throughout the nation. The state of California has made it quite clear, they do not like the fact that we do get military equipment. Most of the military equipment acquired by law enforcement agencies throughout the state of California has been armored vehicles. The federal government did not, uh, get away with, get, uh, do away with the ten thirty-three program, and that is the program that allows us to acquire this free equipment. So, this, this bill, in my opinion, was designed to provide oversight to where a, either board or municipal, municipality now has oversight over a police department, or a sheriff on the acquisition of this type of equipment. That's unprecedented, gentlemen. It's, uh, it's never happened, especially with an, an elected position, to where you now have this oversight by a board of supervisors on acquiring this equipment. Do I think it's going to be a problem with this board? Absolutely not. Do I think it's going to be a problem with boards throughout the state of California, or some of the city councils? Of course I do. It will, it will become an issue. The majority of the equipment that we have, that is now classified as military, is not actually from the military. Uh, we have a lot of kinetic energy equipment, we have a lot of, uh, what we, we actually put in there is our patrol rifles. That was debatable, whether a patrol rifle even fell within this category, but we felt it was prudent, and it was safe to follow the law, and that's exactly what we are doing. We are following, uh, the law on this. I have no issues with justifying or answering, uh, public oversight or input on why we have the equipment, why we've acquired it, and how we have acquired it. Those are already in place. Also in place, uh, is, is something extremely important to note, is we have policy and procedures that we must follow before we ever use any of this type of devices or equipment. Use-of-force policy, firearms policy, less-lethal policy, we adhere to best practices, state law, federal law, and most importantly, the United States Constitution. Specifically, when it deals with this type of equipment, is the Fourth Amendment. Before any of this equipment is utilized, we must be following those policies and procedures, and we have to answer for that. There already is built-in oversight, whether it's a federal lawsuit, whether it's the state coming in and doing an audit, whether it's the grand jury, those oversights are already built into place. But with this, with this policy, um, I believe the state is trying to get rid of as much equipment as they possibly can, based on the fact that they don't like the big scary vehicles, and that's really what it, what it comes down to. Biggest question I get asked is, why do we have these big military armored vehicles? And I'll tell you exactly why we have those vehicles. It protects the people, the men and women of this sheriff's office, from gunfire. That's exactly what it does. There's not, nothing offensive about these vehicles, nothing. It is purely a defensive mechanism. We have successfully used it, not only to protect my people, but also to protect the people of Amador County. We have used it in rescue operations, uh, more than once, actually, and that is exactly what it is designed to do. So, I make no apologies for having that equipment, and we will continue to follow this law, and we will continue to answer the hard questions when asked due to the oversight, I have no problems with that. I do ask the board that you please accept this policy, that we can continue to use this equipment, and there is one component of this policy that I must, uh, address, that if accepted, if the resolution does not include the fact that we will accept another agency coming into our county with this type of equipment, uh, according to this law, it will not be allowed. So, if, if we ask for mutual aid, and we have asked for mutual aid over the years, whether it be from Sacramento County Sheriff's Office, the Calaveras Bomb Squad, they all have similar components that fall under this, uh, this new Assembly Bill. So, if we ask for, for assistance, and it is not in our resolution, they technically will not be allowed to come into Amador County and dispose of a destructive device. That makes about zero sense to me. But if our resolution includes the fact that we will authorize other agencies to bring that equipment into Amador County, we will be following the law at that point, at that time. So, I would ask that, uh, the resolution, if county council, uh, has to make any amendment, and the board does approve this, that, uh, that, that is included.
Is that included in the current?
Well, right, right now, the, the, the ordinance only adopts the policy, so if it's in the policy, it will be, it will be adopted. If it's not in the policy, then we should add it. All the ordinance does is adopts the policy that the sheriff's office prepared, so I don't, I don't remember whether that's in there, if it's not.
So, the, the policy talks about exactly what I just talked about, but it doesn't specifically ad- adopt that. So, can we do an amendment?
Well, we could, yeah, the, so, the, the way the, the bill is written, you know, usually this would just come before the board, and it says, "The Board." So, all it does is say, "The Board must, uh, in a public meeting, at a, in a, in a regular session, approve the policy." Um, and, and most times, you would just do it with a resolution, it could have gone on consent, but the way this, this, uh, bill was written, it said, no, it has to be by an ordinance, um, not a resolution, and it needs to be out of, uh, done at a regular session. So, um, we can add it, I, I.
So, so currently, it says, "Military equipment should not be used in any, any other law enforcement agency or member in this jurisdiction, unless the military equipment is approved for use in accordance with this policy." That's seven oh eight point six.
Mr. Gilat, could the board adopt this today with that language included? Or does it need to come back to us?
In the meantime, any members have a question?
Yeah, no, I, I do have a statement. I remember years ago, when, um, a gentleman was down Carbondale Road, actually a person I knew pretty well, and he's having some issues in life, and I think he had, he was a very good shot, actually, he had a seven-millimeter Magnum, and I heard your, your SWAT team was very scared, and the SWAT vehicle had the time, because a seven-millimeter Magnum would have went through it like Swiss cheese. And I don't think he was out to kill anybody, he was just, he was having a hard day, but, um, so, yeah, the, the MRAP you have now, uh, I think you go in there, and you can get close enough to that, a person like that gentleman, just say, hey, what's your issue? How can we resolve it? And back then, it was, um, what you had was inadequate.
And then, that's exactly why, at the time, Sheriff Ryan decided to acquire that first piece of armor, which was the, the big MRAP, because it, uh, ballistically will handle a seven-millimeter Magnum up to a fifty-cal. And I was on the SWAT team at the time, I was actually the team leader on that incident, and he was actively shooting at us, he had pinned down a family in a residence. The vehicle we had, the armor, was not sufficient, yet I asked the SWAT team, we're going to have to rescue that family, who wants to go? And they all jumped in.
Yeah, I don't believe he shot your vehicle, did he?
No, no, and I, I asked, uh, I asked Mr. Suzie later, why he did not shoot our vehicle, because we went right past his residence, and he said, "At that point, uh, I knew you weren't going to leave, and, uh, I no longer felt that I needed to keep firing at you."
Yeah, no, it's.
But, but, once again, I want to.
But it's still a scary time.
It, it was, it was, uh, yeah, it, it was very uncomfortable being in that vehicle, I can tell you that much.
Let's get back to a kind of.
Sheriff Redmond? Um, how, if, if we amended the policy, so the policy that you read, seven oh eight point six, versus, uh, military equipment should not be used by any other law enforcement agency or member in this jurisdiction, unless the military equipment is approved for use in accordance with our policy, uh, and if we added, or the policy applic- applicable to the other agency or agencies, so as long as it was covered by their policy, that their equipment, did, did that work for you?
Yes.
Okay. So, then we, then we would amend the po, so we, we wouldn't amend the ordinance, but we did amend the policy, just to add, so as long as it's covered either by our, our policy, or the other agency's policy that allowed that equipment, it can come in.
Perfect. I just want to make sure, like I said, that when mutual aid does, uh, uh, come about, it's, uh, not time we can come to the board and have a meeting about whether we need mutual aid, or whether we need the bomb squad to come in, uh, or a tactical operation.
Okay, you can work with the adjacent jurisdictions, then, on getting the language in the policy figured out.
Well, well, theoretically, that other agency won't have, won't be bringing it if it's not authorized by their policy.
That, that, that's correct.
For them to have it, it would be in their policy.
Right.
And so, it's going to be.
That's why our sheriff needs to be talking to their sheriff and get that in their policy.
Yes, and we, the, the sheriffs, we had a board meeting, uh, a few months ago, and we all discussed this with our legal counsel. Uh, there's a, a lot of gray area, and we all decided that we were going to put in items that not necessarily fell under, uh, the law, but we wanted to conform with the law, and felt it was better to have everything listed that we possibly would ever use. Uh, that way, we're not doing, like I said, trying to come back to a board during the middle of a tactical operation.
Any other board questions?
I, you know, I just had a simple question, though. Um, really, the only military items that I've seen on this real list is MRAP and AMA TV that you actually received from the military, everything else was, was able to be purchased through an agreement, uh, how do I want to say it, that an average person could not buy, but a sheriff's department could buy.
That, that's correct. The really only military equipment are those two vehicles. The, the rest of our kinetic energy devices, our noise, flash, you know, diversion devices, our forty-millimeter launches, uh, launchers, all of that is less-lethal options, uh, you know, and, and in a time where the state is trying to talk about, you know, de-escalation, oversight, um, not using that ultimate force, which is deadly force, why would we want not to, why would we not want to have the tools, uh, in our arsenal to, to be able, to be able to de-escalate situations? And that's exactly what all of this, uh, equipment is, but it is purchased through, uh, civilian contractors.
Right.
It's not purchased through the military.
So, because I, I've dealt with DRMO too many times in my life, and it is the worst piece of equipment, because the military has worn it out by the time it gets into DRMO, so I'm a little, little, little hesitant to have a forty-millimeter launcher sitting there that's not, you know, freshly purchased.
Most, mostly, besides those vehicles, which were, uh, in, in extremely good Most, mostly, besides those vehicles, which were in extremely good shape, you know, optics that we, we got through DRMO, I think ninety percent of them didn't even work. So.
Right.
The military usually doesn't give stuff up unless it's pretty worn out. That's it.
Any other board questions? Oh, any public comments on this issue?
Yes, we do have a comment via Zoom.
Okay.
Ms. Grandbois, please go ahead when ready.
Good morning. My name is Cindy Grandbois. I am one hundred percent in favor of you passing this ordinance. I feel that the term military grade is majorly overworked in our society recently. So many other things fall under the purview. And anything that we can do to protect the lives of the public and of course, our sheriff's officers, the deputies, please do what you can, pass this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Any other comments?
Not at this time.
Okay. Any other public comment from anyone in the room? Board members, your action then?
Can I make a motion, waive the reading of proposed ordinance, adding the language county council can is necessary and schedule it for adoption in regular agenda in April twenty sixth, twenty twenty two.
And the language would be in the policy?
Yeah.
Move sent by a supervisor O'Neto, second by supervisor Crew to waive the reading of the ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Much carries. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
All right. Board's going to take a break. We will resume at, let's say, ten four, ten forty. So you got about eight minutes, board members.
Okay.
Now we're doing the public hearing. Yep.
We'll go to the public hearing.
Why don't we turn that ahead like two hours?
Good morning.
It started just a minute. We're waiting for our lone supervisor. I think we waited long enough. We'll go on with our public hearing at this time, ten thirty public hearing. Planning Department, appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of an application to amend use permit, number UP dash nineteen, twelve dash one submitted by La Mesa Vineyards LLC. The request seeks to increase the limits on days of operation and special events. Staff? Good morning.
Good morning. So this is Krista yourself from the Planning Department. So on February eighth, twenty twenty two, the Planning Commission hosted a public hearing on this use permit amendment and denied it. And then an appeal was filed by the applicant on February eighteenth, twenty twenty two. So some background for the project. It is a use permit proposed amendment for La Mesa Vineyards. The original use permit was approved in May of twenty twenty two. And that approved permit included limited events and specific hours and days of operation. As is allowed per code within the R one A, single family residential and agriculture zoning district under the uses permitted with a use permit. So the request seeks to increase the limits of those days of operation and number of special events. So that's measured within the calendar year. And then that request requires amendment of that original use permit and the conditions of approval. So the use permit is number UP dash nineteen, twelve dash one. And then there is also required subsequent environmental review of those proposed changes. So the existing uses that are allowed within the conditions of approval and for the original use permit, it's days of operation being Friday through Monday from eleven AM to five PM, live and or amplified music until five PM on those days. And then six events annually with up to a hundred guests. The proposed uses included in the amendment that was filed in twenty twenty one increases those days of operation to, up to seven days per week. So it's unlimited days of operation and then flexible hours of operation. And then the live and or amplified music limits would be changed from the five PM limit to the ten PM limit. And then the request also includes participation in six Amador Vittner's events with no specific attendance limit, twenty four events with up to a hundred and twenty five attendees, and twelve events with up to two hundred and fifty attendees. So that'd be per year. So, so again, that amendment was denied by the Planning Commission. And so it was appealed. So following the public hearing today, the board may either deny the appeal and therefore deny the application for that amendment or grant the appeal and therefore approve the application to amend that use permit. And then of course, also approve those amended conditions of approval and the environmental document.
Can the board approve or deny, let's say the board approves or denies the amendment, but can they grant specific portions of the, of the areas?
Like.
Or instance, I'll give you, I'll give you a four instance, Greg. Like, could the board deny, but say we approve the participation in events that coincide with Amador Veterans Association sponsored events?
So if, if that's what the board wanted to do in the end, then you would be granting the amended use permit and adding only those events.
Okay. Thank you. Got both lawyers shaking their heads. That's good. Any questions, board members, for staff?
Here's a public comment.
Well, I'd like to go with the proponent first.
Well, if I could add, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have visited both the proponent and Mr. DiAgostini during this, you know, last event. I'm, I've visited with Daniel on Saturday and listened to the music. Just wanted to make sure that was known.
I, I would make the same admission. I met with Mr. Lagu, Mr. Swett, at Mr. Swett's office, and Mr. DiAgostini at his residence without music playing.
I've been to both residents. No music playing.
Me too. I've been to both Project Proponent and Mr. Dagostini's.
Yes, and I've been to Mr. DiAgostini's house. I've been to Mr. Lagu's winery, La Mesa, and his attorney there, Tom's house is also present.
All right. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
You know, my name's Com Legu. I am the resident owner and winemaker at La Mesa Vineyards on Shenandoah Road in Plymouth.
And I apologize for mispronouncing your name. Lagu?
Legu, yes. Com. For the past eleven years, my family's planted vineyards on twenty five acres and constructed a winery and special tasting room that opened in twenty twenty amidst this difficult pandemic. Realization of my dream required a massive personal investment and has benefited providing local jobs, generating county tax revenue, and perhaps most importantly, preserving our agricultural land from residential development. La Mesa is bounded by commercial vineyards and wineries and is located along the major commercial artery of Shenandoah Road, where there are some twenty wineries. As one of more than sixty wineries country, countywide, I'm proud to be contributing towards this vibrant economic sector that provides to our local community. I'm here before you to request an amendment for our use permit. As you know, because La Mesa zoned R one A, we are required to have a use permit to operate our tasting room. We do not fall under the winery ordinance of the AG zone wineries, where there is no public input on tasting rooms. It was only after opening that I learned that permit issued to us is one of the most restricted in all of the county and is not one that can allow my business to be successful. I was advised to reapply in order to secure terms that are more in line with other R one A wineries. I've been going through this process again for the last nine months with many folks here in the planning, building, public works, health and safety departments. To say it's been a major undertaking is an understatement. I'm simply stunned that my case would take up so much time and three hundred and ten pages of the agenda package here. I've involved my neighbor from the beginning of the planning stages of our tasting room. Together, we walked. from the beginning of the planning stages of our tasting room. Together, we walked the proposed locations, and I listened carefully to his input. There was no objection to the plans at the original Planning Commission hearing in twenty twenty. In fact, there was not one single person with any public comment, which is reflected in the minutes, and it was unanimously approved. Throughout this current application, we have wait again weighed the impact on our closest neighbor, and for the third time in this nine-month process, have compromised and reduced our ask to a minimal set of conditions for La Mesa to succeed, less than almost all cases to what other R one A zoned wineries like us have received, and far less than the A G. Zone Wineries in my immediate neighborhood. We strive to be good neighbors, and I'm sure you will hear this in the public commentary. In requesting these permissions, I've taken my neighbor's concerns to heart. I have enjoyed meeting with each of you and listening to your advice. I've met with and tried to work with Mr. Di Agostini. On our current application, I'd hope to find a way to balance our respective needs as adjoining property owners. Unfortunately, we were not successful, even though I've been willing to make major compromises. We don't want to host weddings or rock concerts at La Mesa. We simply seek a small number of event days to host small-scale occasions for our wine club customers. This is critical to successfully grow and retain our business. Up to eighty percent of a winery's business comes from its wine club members, loyal customers who repeat purchases over and over again and return in virtuous cycle with friends who also become members. Club members in Amador County are last about five years, the longest of any wine region. Keep them loyal. They need to feel special. Special events are one of the most important ways to do that. Wine club release parties, winemaker dinners, special barrel tasting experiences behind the cellar doors. We do up to four releases a year over two days each. That is eight event days just for wine releases. I also need a limited number of other special event days to attract new members, for example, winemaker dinners in the evening. As a new tasting room, we also need marketing support, and being part of the fifty-member Amador Vintner Association, A V A., is incredibly powerful to help us attract customers. However, the A V A. requires mandatory participation in two county events, which they use for funding called Behind a Cellar Door and Big Crush. These are multi-day events, which last year took all six of our event days, and this year will take five. We are permitted to only have five events, so none are left for our wine club. Even though these events today were run are run by reservation and not true events, per se, our use permit still counts them as event days. I would like to see A V A. event days excluded from our event count. Last, having flexible operating days is also key. While I would love to be allowed to open seven days a week like virtually all tasting rooms in Amador, I understand that would impact my neighbor, and the reality is some days are not that busy and don't warrant opening. However, being able to open on flexible days to respond to peak seasons, holidays, and other A V A. initiatives, for example, like the Access Amador, which seeks to attract customers here midweek to reduce peak traffic on Saturdays, is all very important to success. You have to be open when people are here. Also, to be open a minimum five days a week allows full-time employment for staff with benefits in a tight labor market. We can only open four days a week, so I'm I've got a lot of part-timers. I've come here today with a revised proposal with far fewer requested permissions than at the Planning Commission hearing where we were denied in the hopes of reaching a compromise today. I sincerely hope you will think what I'm asking for is reasonable and balances the respective needs of La Mesa to succeed with my neighbor's concerns. Tom will now take us through the specifics of our compromise. Thank you.
So, members of the board, we just wanted to try and lay it out graphically. I think it's an easy way.
Can you identify yourself?
Tom Sweat, attorney for the applicant. You can you can see in this graph for the we've tried to show the different types of average entitlements for the different wineries in Amador County. You can see in the first column for the properties that were being referenced that are under the winery ordinance that have ag zoning are allowed to open seven days a week with no restriction on their operating hours. They have three hundred and sixty-five events per year, so they can have up to a hundred and twenty-five people a day, every day, at their particular location. Twelve of their events can have up to four fifty, and they can have amplified music until ten P M. And there's other conditions, but these are the ones that are relevant to what we're talking about. You can see that this there is a winery across the street from the applicant's tasting room that is subject to these permissions, and it's sort of, I think, was the genesis of what was requested at the Planning Commission level. And you can see in the February request from the Planning Commission was for seven day a week, no restrictions, twenty-four events a year, plus another twelve, so a total of thirty-six, plus with the amplified music until ten P M. I think it's been acknowledged, and we've worked with this process since the Planning Commission hearing, that, you know, it is an R one A zoned property, and comparing the requests to what is on average allowed with comparable R one A wineries makes more sense. And when we went back and thought about how we were going to do this, it really was a function of, okay, so what does La Mesa actually need to succeed? Not not a wish list of what you would want, but if you're going to maintain that wine club and build the business and and be successful over time, what is actually required? And you can see for the comparable R one A wineries in Amador County, and we list the comparable wineries that we chose at the bottom, and this information across all wineries is in your agenda packet. In those R one A winery use permits, so seven day a week operations with generally unrestricted hours are allowed. The events vary, but, you know, you're on average fourteen and up to perhaps twenty-one events in any given year. And a lot of those, and almost all of those R one A use permits also exempt the Amador Vintner Association events from that count. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. As to amplified music, many of them are are allowed until ten, at ten P M. on any day, and then two have a similar requirement of music being off by five. So the result of this process, going back and trying to, for lack of a better term, right-size the ask, what we are proposing, as Com brought up in his speech, is to do or allow five days per week, still with the nine to five operating hours, but five days flexible. So right now, he's tied down to two specific days, a Friday through Monday schedule, but allow up to five days per week. As to events, we're requesting that we have six events that are a hundred and twenty-five participants max, and six events that are one hundred and fifty participant max. There'd be additional condition on that, that no more than two events could be held in any one month. That way, we don't have a situation where they're, you know, weekend after weekend after weekend, that all the events are stacked up in one sequence. Yeah, and unfortunately, there's a typo here I didn't catch, but up to four of the events could be evening events. So the request of that, you know, of those twelve events, four could be or could be allowed to extend into the evening. Those events would run until nine P M. at the latest. So once a quarter, or four times per year, there could be a winemaker dinner or some other event that could go a little later in the evening. And that's to allow those those events that can help make wine club members feel special and do something that helps La Mesa grow its business. As to amplified music would be off by five P M. on all days except for the four evening events, and the four evening events, that music would be off by eight. So the three-hour additional buffer for four times a year, be able to have music, background music for those events till eight o'clock. And again, those evening events would have to break up by nine. And you'll see also there's a condition in the agenda packet that there would be a seventy-five decibel limit at the property line with respect to music. So that really, it's not very loud when it comes to music itself. There's probably louder noise that comes from the highway, or excuse me, Shenandoah Road. And that that's a condition that really would be unique to La Mesa. If you look at the proposed mitigated negative declaration that's in the packet, the set of conditions that are in there were developed for this larger ask, the original request here, we're not asking that those be changed. So there's, to a certain degree, an over mitigation, but we're okay with that. What we're hoping to procure today, and hopefully you guys will agree with us, that this minimum set of conditions here, the ask we're proposing today, is really what the applicant needs to continue to grow the business, invest in Amador County, employ locals, and contribute to a wine industry that's vitally important to Amador County. If there's any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them.
Not at this time.
Not at this.
I have one. You have a list of comparable wineries, seven of them?
Mm-hmm.
How'd you come up with the comparable basis?
Um, Com, you can speak to that if you wish, but there there are wineries that are in similar locations, similar size. Some of them that we did exclude from the R one A were, one was already closed, one was being run out of a house. There were sort of scenarios that didn't seem to match to, you know, geographic location of the winery and the nature of everything that's around it.
Well, say that I don't think you can generalize this in every property that's R one A, because the considerations on approvals are based on extenuating factors. Where's your neighbor located? What is the public sentiment that's involved there? And a variety of other factors that affect the different approvals. That's why you see no approval is consistent.
No, I think that I would agree that is the case, but I do think that it's a good metric for comparison. And what we're proposing here is less on average than than what, I guess, on an average basis with the comparables we've chosen, it's it's a little bit less than what is often targeted in the R one A use permits. And we understand the unique nature of the situation that we're in. And that I though it wasn't in my column here, again, and this was in Com's presentation, we brought up that, let me go back to the bottom again of the, you know, that we were asking for, and it's a very common condition, for an R one A use permit to carve out the Amador Vintner Association sponsored events from that event count. I think there's also a letter in your agenda packet that describes how those events are run now. It's a reservation system for, you know, tasting in the particular tasting room, not it's really become a system that everybody enjoys, and part of that benefit is that you don't end up with a crush of people at one winery at one time, you know, that it is really a measured, there are more people that day, but it's a measured flow of traffic and something that has a lot less impact than a than a event where everybody's there at the same time might have.
Chairman?
Yes.
Um, if I may, the four events that you're proposing at night, was that going to have also have live music like you do on Saturdays from twelve to four?
There would be the potential that they all may not have live music, but we'd like them to be allowed to have live music during those four evening events.
Yeah. To me, because I sat out in his park, you know, his front yard for roughly about twenty minutes, I actually gonged on Mr. Di Agostini's, his sound chimes out front to get his attention, and I hit them. I hit them very hard, and he could not hear it over the music that was being played on Saturday. It wasn't until one of his family members came home and went and got him that he could hear me. So that was a very uncomfortable position that I was left in, to sit in his, you know, front yard, and while your live music was being played, and and this is something that he has to live with, and then to live with that at night was, for me, you know, a nonstarter right off the bat.
Kind of like what we've already been involved with with your office representing the people up at Surry Junction with the motorcycles. Now, the music may not be as loud as that, but it's constant. And that's what the issue was with the motorcycles. It's once in a while is fine, but constant for an hour gone in?
Well, that's that's why it's only proposed four times a year. Wanted to make that, you know, we understand its additional impact, but and that is also, unfortunately, I don't have a reading for that. I apologize that it was, you know, perceived as being too loud. I don't know if that would have met the seventy-five decimal limit.
Unknown. And the singer wasn't the best anyway either, so that's not your fault. But that was just timing on it. One of well, to add on to that, for those four events, could they be done up at the warehouse?
Uh, some of them probably would, you know, for like barrel tasting and discussion, you know, that in that context, some would be up there and some would be down below, near the tasting room. And or that's probably a better place to do a winemaker dinner, you know, near the vines and on the terrace outside there. But if you're going to do something like a barrel tasting, obviously, it would be up at the winery, which is on the other end of the problem.
One of the other things that I noticed, I do take family and friends out to the wineries, and but I don't drink. I'm not a I don't drink, you know, have the wine at all. So a lot of times, I'll walk through the winery, see what they have, and then I'm out to the truck. And of course, it's warm. Normally, we're doing this in August. And so I'm sitting there with the truck idling. Well, Mr. Di Agostini, you know, showed me where some people were idling in their vehicles sitting right next to his fence, and the exhaust vents are coming straight through the fence into his property. So that's, you know, these are a lot of the things that, you know, I had to think about, you know, about myself. So now I'm going to have to rethink my policy when I'm going out to a winery of how to how to deal with part of this myself.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that it's a four-acre parcel out there. It's an R one A zoning, and those typically are forty acres in size. And the Di Agostini family subdivided that property and sold the adjoining properties off. If that one had been kept forty acres in size, then there'd be fifteen acres in between everybody. But that's not the way that it worked out. For whatever reason, I wasn't there when that subdivision happened. But perhaps it was done to, you know, smallest parcel around the house possible, so you could sell more acres. But that's in normal R one A situation, there would be a significant buffer. But here, because of, you know, that subdivision project, whatever it was, now we've got this very small substandard parcel that we're all dealing with here. So still have to balance everybody's everybody's interests, but it would be better if it were a larger parcel. Unfortunately, it's not.
Well, you talk about a the business model, and they need these, at least at a minimum, these to be able to be successful as their business model. But one thing I would say is when you develop a business model, you look at the piece of property you're going to buy before you go into it and say, this doesn't fit my business model. I need a bigger piece. I need more flexibility. And, you know, that's what some of the other wineries have done, is probably looked at the piece of property and said, this is more suitable, probably less objections to what we need as a successful business model.
Well, I'm sure if the applicant could have foreseen the future to this discussion today, maybe there would have been something, you know, a different course of action taken. But right now, at that time, I don't think that anybody anticipated that we would be here today, you know. So I appreciate that, that you really do have to plan to the best of your abilities, but no plan survives, you know, sort of first contact with the reality.
I would say that's probably a very true statement. Some issues I see is, one is probably you got that, I don't think it's something Mr. Lagu probably wants to pay to fix, but you've got that corner, you come around there, and if you get traffic queuing up, they go up there, and you could have a traffic problem there, because it's a blind corner if you're coming from like the Plymouth area. Also, Um, also, I would like to hear at some point, hear from staff about, I think Mr. Lagu made a comment that the big crush from behind the cellar door took up his last year, like all six event days. Um, I don't think that was a planning department in town that he put that in place, but maybe you'd like to hear from them on that. Um, I think it was probably six events, not six event days. Um, would that be okay from them now, Chair? Just to get that out in open?
Oh, you mean the three day event would be one, will only count as one?
Correct.
Instead of counting all three days of the big crush?
Big crush behind a cellar door took up, you know, all six event, events or event days?
Last year and five this year.
Well, we're not deliberating on this yet. We're just throwing out concepts. Yeah, that's kind of what I was bringing up previously in the participation in events which coincide with Amador Vintner Association sponsored events.
Yeah. How is that counted, Chuck? Mr.?
Excuse me, Chuck, Betty's planning department. It, in the past, if it was those each day, so an Amador Vintners Association event that lasted two days or three days, each one of those days would have been considered an event under the terms of the use permit.
Okay.
Chuck, that was back when it was a free for all, you could go anywhere you wanted, right? And now it's by reservation. So there's a maximum of twenty, was it, Colm, or you told me that at one time?
Yeah, big crush used to be two days, maybe it still is, but it's by, right, it was run, you know, much differently now, it's by reservation. But those two days still would have been considered two events.
Okay.
Yeah, and how they run those events could still change.
Yeah, what they were called was, wasn't material.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board?
Not at this time. Thank you.
All right. Public hearing is open and, uh, remind everyone, we got, uh, a lot of letters from people. So if you could, uh, not rehash over too much of the information, a lot of it was, uh, either one side or the other, pretty consistent. Uh, I will hold you to the three minute time limit, except for Mr. Di Agostini, who will let speak first and, uh, as the neighbor of the property. Morning.
Morning. See if I can get this set up here. So thank you for the opportunity and thank you each for coming out to my property. And those of you out in Zoom land, thank you for participating and here in the room. Hi, me.
Did you ever fix the problem with your, uh, gophers?
Yeah, we're working on them, but he's really working hard.
Okay.
Um, before I say anymore, this is kind of a complicated issue and yet it isn't. Always remember, there's a lot of businessmen who maybe lined up to talk on behalf of my neighbor. And I get that, but I, I wanna put a little word out, whoever speaks, let everybody know, have you been in my backyard and my front yard on my property with me in the past two years? And if you haven't, I don't honestly think you understand because you've only got one part of this story. And how can you have a whole opinion when you only have one part? And there's been discrepancies made. As businessmen, I understand bit about we all should have the same opportunities. There are lots of numbers there. However, there's also a kind of a mantra that everybody gets, location, location, location. You always figure out the location and if the location's not right and you can't modify your work to work in that location, then you close the shop and get out of town and find another location that works. That's kind of the rule of business, I think. But I do wanna say that when I met Colm and his wife and his children when they first came, I felt like I had a friend and we've had a friendly relationship till last August. Really? I mean, I've eaten dinner in his home, I've shown him pruning techniques, we've walked in my yard more than once, taken solids, wife has made me treats. Been really good. There's something though, that was in the paper and you said it again today, Colm, that this article said that I was a participant. I don't have my glasses on, they're right there.
You can.
But that I participated in, in all the steps. That is absolutely false.
Daniel, can you, can you speak to the board? I don't wanna get a situation of one, one to one.
So that's a false statement. I didn't really know the location of that spot until I saw the white chalk marks. Then I took a breath and went, well, this is gonna be interesting. And that was only in two thousand nineteen. We didn't get a lot of rain that winter and construction moved on and seeing the development of a building. Well, we worked together. We had talked about, uh, putting olive trees, the same type that I have new parking lot is now. Talked about that in twenty twenty-one. He opened in the fall of twenty twenty in COVID and it wasn't until spring, last spring, that I saw what I was facing. I quickly put up privacy screens, February and March, and he planted lilies under his feet. Cause we knew, it's gonna be, this is a shock to me. I've lived there my whole life on and off and I needed some privacy because it's, parking lot is right in my backyard where I work a lot. There's another word that's mentioned a lot, events. What is an event anyway? What I didn't know was his business plan of having musical events every Saturday and some Sundays in his four days of being open. So last summer was a kind of a dance where we're getting used to the situation next door. He getting used to someone all of a sudden complaining a little bit, the background music playing, the music during the event. I guess it's an event, I don't know. If you go to his webpage right now, which is a beautiful webpage, because sometimes I wonder why you had to be a member of the Amador Vintners because a neighbor knows how to market himself really well. And there's a button up there for music and starting this year on April second and every Saturday till the end of October, seven times four, that's twenty-eight music events are already lined up. But I didn't know that was gonna happen last summer. And so that was a new experience for me. And finally, this, and, and at the same time, I mean, that's what it is. Have to live with it. I was still willing to work with that, but I, I need some privacy. I, I also had to experience a lot of dust, cars, smoke, different things. And Colm has addressed each of those, but what happened in August was I got a notice from the county office saying that wanted seven days a week, all these other events. And I was shocked and I wrote him a note and that's in the package, probably taking up a lot of those pages because I was, I felt like I'd been sucker punched really. Had no idea that he wanted to be open that long with that much noise. And he, he wrote this, first, I am very sorry for the way this got to you. I wanted to meet with the county first and then have a conversation with you. Once I had more information from them, but they just went ahead and mailed out to everybody so quickly, I did not ever have a chance to do either. Without context, I can understand your reaction. That raised a red flag in my head. Really? That's kinda schlepping it off. You don't come and make a proposal without having thought about it. We'd been talking all week and the weeks before about different things. That bothered me. So we've got to this point today when I feel like it's aggressive. I mean, we went all through the pack committee meetings and the planning commission, and even in there, can't, he, he wrote that my yard was so cluttered with greenhouses. I couldn't get to my backyard except through the gate that I had paid for before he purchased the parpy next door. And that's not true. I don't know why he's approaching things that way. My yard, as anybody can tell, there's not a normal yard and that's getting back to location. It's a, it's up and downs of farms. It's my life. It's what I do up here. I'm trying to inspire people to be self-sufficient when they grow their food. It's a learning center. I bring kids from the high school or kids from the grammar school. Groups come into my backyard, which is very interesting and full of diversity. And that's where I teach people how to use nettles to make a tea or a different chamomile to help with fungus. That's what's going on in my backyard and I have two other perfectly usable gates. Now I'm asked to compromise. I mean, he got turned down by the planning commission, but the aggressive businessman he is, which is very successful and he's good at it, but is it appropriate? I, I appreciate the fact, and I was telling my aunt this this morning, I love it that he's got Jesus full-time manager in his vineyard. I wish more people out here would hire our local men or women in the county and let them have a job that they can be in and get benefits. That's awesome. I love that. And he's got, got young people he's employed, but the whole model of his business is one that would do better in Sutter Creek or in Jackson. Really a wine bar. I'm not a stranger to the wine community. Everybody in this room, including winemakers that might be behind me or listening in, my pedigree goes back beyond everybody. My father was the winemaker at Di Agostini. My grandfather was the winemaker there. I was drinking wine when I was less than six months old because it was on the end of a piece of bread being stuck into my mouth by my grandfather. While my neighbor was in high school, I was building a studio by my hands out of the wood mine or milled at the old Jameson Mill and I was shoveling out fermenters. We, we had a winery that was different than the model today. And I'm friends with some of the finest winemakers in the state of California, wine writers around the world. I was the guy that did the brochure for the Amador Vintners, not anti-winery. Photographed everybody in the valley involved in the wine making. But I've seen, and I have friends in Napa that they don't have tasting rooms, but they sell out. This model is entertainment. Come in, you pay fifteen bucks and you can get a selection of five little wines. Pay another fifteen, you can try another one. He has seventeen bottles of wine, different wine in the second year of wine making. Model has become wine clubs today. I grew up in a family and I still have Soban family. When you walk into their winery, you, you don't keep saying, oh, I'd like another refill there, another one of this, or I'll sit down and have a bottle of this. You taste the wine, if you like it, you buy it. If you don't, you're tasting. Neighbor has set up a model where you sit down, you relax and it's more like a wine bar. I think I don't need to compromise anymore. That's what I think. But paper indicated I wouldn't compromise, but if you, and I gave you all the copy, I did offer a compromise. And I met with the attorney and, and Colm. I told them four days, I don't care if it's Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, so you can catch the Monday offs. You can slip it back and forth, four days, that's it. Asked for five, an opening earlier and he heard me, didn't hear me. Told him I didn't care about the adding, when is it? You get six on R one A, he had in his, and with the six from Amador Vintners, he would, he could have them both. I didn't care about that. Although he doesn't have to belong to the Amador Vintners with his marketing skills. He chose to, so that one didn't bother me. And then yes, for staying open later and some music. And I said at the bottom of that letter, not now. I wanna see you, see how you run your business now. You should be able to make it. That's what I would like you to do. I'd like you to say no, you know? And let's talk again in a year and if things like you're, you're making it and you wanna have a little thing up on your hill, yeah, that might be something nice. That's where I would have put it, the tasting room, if you would have really asked me. It's where my mom used to walk up to. And I think some point in the area, I mentioned it would be good to put a wine cave right in the hill. And it's different than Hellwicks geology, which is full of granite, Charlie Havels, which is serpentine and granite, bad plot spots for caves. But this all that Colm has in tunnels, volcanic ash. That's where I would have put a wine tasting looking out over the west. Hollywood would never have had a problem, but we do have a problem. I, I have a learning center. I wanna keep it that I only have to worry about him being open four days, closing by five. I'll put up with the twenty-eight events I have now from spring till October. Saturdays, sometimes it might go onto a Sunday. I mean, I can always go visit friends, I can go shop, or if it's really good music, I can enjoy it. Far as seven days a week, no. Someday, you know, maybe Colm can get to work and make a nice patio up there on the hill and some of those Saturdays things can shift up there and enjoy the hilltops. But, um, right now I would highly recommend anybody who is, uh, thinking this strictly as a business situation, there is not one private home, particularly with what has been created in that home. Anywhere in this county not comparable to any other R one As. That's what you need to think about. This is, that's what complicates this. This tasting room, as you have all seen, parking lot is my fence against my garden where I work. So I have a studio where I like to sit and meditate, but no longer during the weekends and I really do that. I mean, I appreciate your time. This is kind of in your hands. Think about if that was your backyard.
We don't normally take questions, but since I think all the board members have met with you, any, any questions for Mr. Di Agostini?
I, I have probably one question, Mr. Agostini. You know, it's on the, the, um, use permit said six event days. Um, would you see a problem with, um, figuring the big crush from behind the cellar door or like a day apiece? So I'd be like a total of six event.
So you get, so if I can maybe answer the question before you form it. The big crush is three consecutive days in the fall.
Yes.
Behind a cellar door can be three, this year it was two in the spring. I don't mind them being taken out of the picture and he gets his six events. I don't mind them being taken out of the picture and he gets his six events. That's not an issue for me. No, you know.
Okay.
But they don't count against his. Right now, uh, the six events that he got when he got his original application. Get nullified, he's claiming because they count.
At the day, as three days each or two days each?
Well, you just wanted to think of him as six. Right, six. And if he participates as he's forced to be, you know, member. He loses day each time there's one of those events. So he conceivably, this year he's going to lose five of his event days. He actually gets an event day this year.
Yeah.
So he gets that event day. Those can be big because the numbers can, uh, I don't know where it's defined. Is it two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty that people can go into those places on those days? That's a question that maybe needs to be asked of the Amador Vintner Society. So. He, he has a choice though. He doesn't have to belong to the Vintners. He doesn't belong to the Vintners, then he's got six events on his original application. And he's making a choice to belong to the Vintners. He says he wants to because it brings him more attention. Marketing operation, which it does. I also happen to have looked at his webpage a lot and he's pretty successful using, he, he doesn't really need there. There are not, every winery is in the Vintners Association by, by, and that's another fact.
And I did look at his website like you suggested and yeah, it looks like there's, uh, music just about every Saturday and sometimes Sunday and. And that was something I would think maybe he could talk to you as a neighbor and maybe not have music on every Saturday. I mean.
It's the whole approach. I admire this, his tenacity as a businessman. He's very successful. I mean, he's still got businesses running. This is not his only source of income. So that's bothers me a little bit as we think about the picture of Amador County because right on that sharp turn. Which we used to call Vol Smith's Corner because there was an old Indian couple there in a shack. And. This is the first. Uh, new set of wineries coming in. And it happens to be a winery, not all wineries use music. For events, but, but this is what's happening and this, this is what also bothers me that. Business gets to trump the country. The, the peacefulness of it. It took me clear until all this last summer to, I think, convince him not to just be playing background music. I mean, once the girls got there in the morning on Thursday. It turned on the music and it wouldn't go off as long as they're over there. This background music for people to drink to, not just the live events. That happened all last year and it wasn't until I sent an email, I got a copy right here on Valentine's Day. This year I sent a note to him saying, Callum, you got it right. Background, I can still barely hear it. But it's not intrusive anymore. That's just the daily operation. And. I think things might get better. The old Anders will get taller. But not if we let someone come in and say. I don't like the location rules, change them for me so I can expand. And that's the wrong thing we should be doing, you know? Live by the rules. You're smart, you know the rules and I'm just not so sure. Anything was being looked at seriously.
Think we need to.
I'm done, I'm done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you could, uh, just preface this, when you come up to make your public comment, if you could state your name, um, if you wanted where you live, but, uh, please give, um. Your three minute presentation.
Write down your name.
We'll try and hold people to that, so. Morning, John.
Good day. I always announce my name, John R. Campbell, Sutter Creek, California. I'd like to thank this board for, uh, actually visiting Mr. Di Agostini and, and the applicant. I think that's pretty important and it's cool that you guys all made the opportunity to do that. There's an old, uh, term you learn like your first semester in economics called caveat emptor, let the buyer beware. Now I know Mr. Sweat and Mr. Lagu, he went to Harvard, I believe, by looking up his, uh, credentials. Um, I'm sure they had learned that in their economics classes, which is you do your due diligence. Now, if you knew this property was owned R one A when you bought it. Then you knew that there was going to be covenants on that property. And to now say, oh, I didn't know about that, I, I don't believe that for a second. And I really think it's improper to have these initial use permits. Every time there's a problem, these people come in front of the board and say, well, I'm making a capital investment, so you should ignore all your own rules. And give me these CUPs. We had this last year where some people had bought a winery in Shandor Valley. And they wanted to go right through a neighborhood easement that wasn't even on their property to have a commercial operation going. And that was completely improper and thankfully this board, uh, rejected it. But their argument was the same, I'm making a big investment in Amador County, so you should let me do what I want. I, I really think that the needs of the people from here should also matter. And Mr. Di Agostini has been on that place for a very long time. And this tasting room, he has twenty five acres, I believe, from what I was reading and I, I liked both the arguments in the paper. I thought they were both compelling arguments. But they chose to build that taste room right next to a Spence line. And it's, I'm sorry, the architecture is also a little bit out of place for my view in Shandor Valley. I think that what this county needs is actual wine ordinance. So these problems in the future, like other counties and wine regions have. You can say this is an actual ordinance, this is what is required for these zoning, probably with a design review component as well. So we don't irreparably change the nature of Shandor Valley. I grew up in Plymouth, I care about it, it's a beautiful place. I think that we're having giant, giant commercial operations that, um. Parade themselves as agricultural operations, changing the nature of something that was always there. And I think the needs of the people that live there should be taken into account more. Thank you.
Hello, my name's, uh, Richard Rose.
Have you signed in, Mr. Rose?
Oh, sorry.
Makes it a little easier on our board clerks, so.
My name is Richard Rose. I'm a fourth generation Amador Countyan, most of it Shandor Valley. I, uh. Now live on the Ferrero Ranch, which my grandfather started in nineteen ten. And my uncle, John Ferrero, left it to me when he passed away. And I'm trying to be a steward of the land, not a developer, not a business person. I'm trying to perpetuate family tradition and the culture of Shandor Valley. I believe I'm a, what I call a preservationist, not an abolitionist or not a capitalist or not a communist or anything like that. I'm a preservationist. I grew up in a culture where you never threw anything away on a ranch because you're probably going to need it someday. I'm in the process of tearing down an old building that either was going to fall down before I tore it down. But I better tear it down before it falls on its own. And I'm finding a lot of square nails in the structure. They stopped making square nails in eighteen ninety two. I'm saving those nails. I might need them someday. My grandparents and my uncle, if they needed something, they either made it or grew it. Now with Home Depot and Lowe's and stuff like that, it's a lot more convenient. So I'm trying to preserve tradition. And memories. Uh. I believe most of Amador County, Shandor Valley are still stewards of the land, not developers, not business people. And I want to keep it that way and I hope I make my point that you see that also. I learned some lessons from my ancestors. Uh, if you need something, you better also need, know that you don't necessarily want it. Wanting and needing are two different things. And if you want something, think first before you decide to want to do it. Decide if you really need it. I had to write things down because I'm eighty two years old and if it's up here, it might not be there long, so I have to write it down. Uh, years ago I went fishing with my uncle at, uh, Capless Lake. And this was twenty five, thirty years ago. And we're sitting there on the bank and a PG&E man came out to check some readings or something that they spill away. My uncle said, there's your next gold. What do you mean, John? That water you're looking at, that's the next gold. Shandor Valley, if you have a hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty people at an event, that's a lot of toilet flushing that's going to go on. Can the valley tolerate that? Can the valley tolerate the water source? Another example of what I believe is Amador County culture, Shandor Valley culture. Years ago, maybe twenty five years ago, sitting in my, uh, uncle's house. Uh, there was a meeting with, uh, chemists, business people and so on from a winery sold to fifteen years. Went around the room, people made any comments. Came to my uncle and somebody said, John, what do you have to say? I grow quality grapes. That was the whole meeting right there. That's all the meeting had to account for. So quality more than quantity. This is opinion and I believe that's my opinion. Farming is, you're lucky to break even some years. Some years you go in a hole. You better have a backup if your backup, excuse me, is not viable, then don't go, don't go into the business of farming. I agree with the comments that were made by Mr. Di Agostini. Farming is not entertainment. It's a gamble. Win or lose, sometimes you come out even, sometimes you win.
You could try and wrap it up, sir.
Yes, sir.
Because you can.
Uh. Farming is not a hobby. Take only, take on only what you can handle. Be a steward of the land and a preservationist. I urge the board to consider all the comments you heard today regarding the variance of the proposal. I heard a lot of maybes from the people who are the developers. I don't operate on maybes. I don't think a business should, neither should, I don't want to tell you people what to do, but neither should the board. Well, maybe I'll do this, maybe I'll do that. That's not the way to govern. Thank you.
Thank you. Lady in the red coming up or?
The sheet's gone.
Oh, Mr., Mr. Ross, Rose, did you, uh, take the sign in sheet with you by chance? The sign in sheet?
Stuck in the back, maybe. That was pretty slick.
Yeah, almost got away with it.
Good morning again. I'm Sherri Curtis. I'm from Pioneer, California, who also enjoys going to do some wine tasting now and then. I think the situation here is intolerable. If the plot plan and his development had been thoroughly reviewed with consideration. Of a person's home and bedrooms. Lying just a few feet from the parking lot and in hearing distance of the music venue. Maybe the planners might have relocated the parking area in a different location as well as where the music venue was facing. I see that the owner did not want it facing his home. But it's okay to do something disgustingly intolerable to someone else's home. Now the situation of dust, exhaust, noise, loss of privacy has. Sadly altered the quality of life of Mr. Di Agostini. I believe that loss could partially be rectified. By requiring, it's an existing loss, not a new loss. But I would suggest by requiring a sound wall along the property line between the two properties. And paving all the parking area would do some to reduce the problem. Gentlemen, do you realize that we have more government rules, rights and regulations? Protecting our frogs and fish and our forests? Forests have over four hundred and fifty nine pages of conditions before you can do anything in the forest. But we have a situation of hardly any qualified standards protecting rights of the homeowners. Or a human person to protect his habitat. And so I would consider that a human is just or more important than a fish. I am asking.
Sarah, you're right at three minutes right now, so if you could wrap it up, please.
Okay. I am asking that you do further mitigation to restore some peace to bordering home of the encroaching development. And that you denied the request. On the increase in time and days and operation. We should also develop better standards for the types of developments within these residential zones. As no other R one A is right next to the bedroom of a home, a private home. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, who, who wants to speak next? If you could show your hand, please, anyone, uh, right in the middle there, young lady? And then I'll come over to you, sir, next. Morning.
Good morning. Never done anything like this before, so I'm a little nervous.
All good.
Um.
What is your name?
My name is Lanell.
What is your name? Did, did you sign in? Yes, thank you. No reason to be nervous here, we're all friends.
Take deep breath and you'll be fine.
Okay. Okay. My name is Lanell Lord and I am an employee of La Mesa Vineyards. I am here today because I support La Mesa's application to modify their operating permit or our operating permit. To my knowledge, the modifications are number one, open our tasting room up to five days a week as opposed to the four we currently have. Number two, add six more customer event days for a total of twelve per year with eight of the event days ending by five, which is during normal business hours. And up to four events could extend into the evening until nine. Number three, I have the Amador, or to have the Amador Vintner Association event not be counted as part of our twelve. So these countywide events do not unfairly restrict La Mesa's ability to cater to their own customers, our own customers. I do not believe what La Mesa is asking is, asking for is unfair. I also believe that these are a reasonable set of conditions for La Mesa to be able to succeed while having a minimal impact on their closest neighbors. This is my job and I enjoy my job greatly. I appreciate that, um, I have been able to find a job close enough to home, uh, for me to be able to work. But I do want to be able to go full time and not have to look for another job, um, or a second job to support my family. So, uh, with this, I do urge you to please approve our request. And, and that is it. Thank you very much for your time.
And by the way, you did a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, sir.
Good morning.
Morning. My name is Jeff Runquist. And, uh, my wife, Margie, and I.
My name is Jeff Runquist and my wife Margie and I operate a winery over in Chernando Valley. And I just wanted to kinda give you a read on my perspective because I think it's rather unique. I sat exactly where Combe did, 2014. I had opened a winery with a conditional use permit, 2008, lived with it for six years. When the moratorium on zoning changes was lifted, I requested a zoning change and I'm now zoned A. But I think the issue here, and I understand zoning and I understand property rights and restrictions and limitations, but I'd also share with you, we opened in 2008. We now sell over six thousand cases of wine a year just out of the tasting room. We've built a wine club that is just a couple centuries shy of five thousand members. You can do it. We've done it. We don't have any extra events. We don't have any amplified music. We're closed by five o'clock. I'm not that far away from two other tasting rooms. The Distasio tasting room is hundred, hundred-and-twenty yards up the hill and Paul J. is right behind me. Not much different. They don't have a lot of events. They're tolerable. But the descriptions of what is being asked for here, if they were occurring at Distasio or at Paul J., it could severely, it would impact the enjoyment that Margie and I have in living in the Chernando Valley. I think it can be done. I don't think, I also think that what wineries are allowed to do today is extravagant. I think that limitations and a winery ordinance that has better definitions and limitations and more protections, I may come off as sounding like I wanna shut the door behind me now that I'm in, but I don't. I think it can be done and it can be done in a reasonable manner. I just think what La Mesa's asking for is going a little bit too far and the main reason is they needed another line on that chart. And all the R-1A wineries that are listed there, the other seven, I think somebody needed to go on Google Maps and measure how far it was from the tasting room to the nearest residence. And had a list of all seven wineries and then the distance between La Mesa's tasting room and Daniel's residence. I think that would be shocking.
Thank you. Put your hand up, sir. Come on up. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Harvey Linebarrier. I will do that as well. Linebarrier took a little bit longer to, okay, anyhow. So, thank you for this opportunity to speak. God bless America. I mean, this type of process is wonderful. I'm here to speak in favor of Combe's requests. My wife Nancy and I have an eighty-acre home up in the El Dorado County. We sell grapes to both El Dorado County and to Amador County. We also have a small Airbnb and through that small Airbnb, we refer people to both El Dorado County and to Amador County. So, I'm very familiar with how some of these things operate within both counties. I also have known Combe for in excess of twenty years. He is a very honest, honorable man and quite honestly, I'm very impressed with his willingness to compromise and make changes to his plans. I think he has done a very good job in limiting the number of requests that he has. Currently, he is, as you will probably recognize, at a significant disadvantage when compared to other wineries of the same size in the same zoning. So, his willingness to step back and allow for concessions, for changes, I think speaks very well for what he is doing and the way that he operates his business. So, again, allowing him to have the small changes or the changes that he is requesting, I think is both reasonable and moves him forward in becoming more compatible or more aligned to some of the other vineyards with whom he competes and with whom he, I guess, shares camaraderie at the same time. So, again, I would ask for your supporting vote in what Combe wants to do. It is reasonable and will meet, I think, both his needs and those of his neighbors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone, if you'd like to put your hand up, if you wanna make a comment? Anyone else? Good morning.
I work in the tasting room at La Mesa. And I just wanted to say I support La Mesa Vineyard's proposal for the amended use permit. As an employee, I'd like to express that we do indeed care for the concerns of our neighbors, but also want the same opportunities as other wineries and to succeed as a business. I'd like you to know that what we do, that we at La Mesa do indeed go out of our way to be a good neighbor. For instance, when the patio has no customers, we turn the music completely off. When the music is on, we keep it at a lower level out of respect and trying to do our part. Also, we had strong beautiful lights on a tree that got many compliments, but we took those down for the same reasons. I've read some of the letters sent in against La Mesa's proposal and I do not agree that this is a hobby or just another project for Combe. He has taught me and many others about agriculture, sustainability and how to maintain a beautiful property. I'm very thankful that Combe is a fair and responsible business owner and I rely on my job at La Mesa Vineyards and I'm proud when I come to work every week. I believe that the requested amendments for La Mesa Vineyards are a good compromise and I hope that you do too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning. My name is Tom Malone. I am one of the seven. I stood before you in 2016. I don't wanna be here today, but I'm just gonna babble here for a couple of minutes. I don't think I can say anything to sway, but you guys probably already have decided. I'm gonna approach this from my children. I have three kids, two no longer live in Amador because they couldn't find employment. The five days a week would not be a music day that he would be adding, but it would give that opportunity to have some full-time employment for the wine pours. I understand, Mr. DiAgostini, I enjoy my peace and quiet at my place as well. I have twenty-one acres. A hundred acres wouldn't be big enough. That's my new thing when I tell people, gee, you're so lucky to have twenty acres. Nope, I need a hundred acres just to space out. So, you guys have a tough, I don't know what to say, you know? This has been going on. I was 2016. I think the A-zonings were stopped giving out in 2012. I'm for winery ordinance as well, but us R-1As that are already in it, we just, we are all good people. All the winery people that I meet, A or A1s, they're all just good people. We wanna follow the rules and that's why Combe's coming in front of you just to try to get that extra day. The whole noise thing, that's, now if I say, "I'm babbling now, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna step down," but I hope you give him at least that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other hands? Yes, sir.
Earl Curtis. I have to admit, I'm guilty of being the District Three Planning Commissioner and I didn't really wanna speak on this, but I wanted to say that I was one of the people that voted it down during the hearing at the Planning Commission and the reason for that was I really wish that we had an ordinance or guideline for R-1A tasting rooms that could be uniformly applied, that had some flexibility in them, but could be uniformly applied by the Planning Commission or so that people that want to open a tasting room can know what to expect when they're in a R-1A. You know, it could have some guidelines about distance from other dwellings. It could have some guidelines about how many tasting, I mean, how many event days you're gonna have. It could have some guidelines about what an event is. I just don't think that is clear to a new applicant and it wasn't, it's not clear to the Planning Commission and I wish that the board, well, they know why I denied it because I don't think that the playing field is level. And I think that we need an ordinance and it might even be worth it, put this off until we have something like that so that we can apply some rules to everybody the same, not counting the ones that already have their permits. Thank you.
That's up to the applicant whether he wants to put it off. I don't know if that would change anything, but Land Use Committee of Supervisor Acts and I have already given staff direction that we are going to start discussing this item and we're gonna do it different than the last two times I've been on the board. I've been on the board a long time and two times we've given it to the Ventnor's Association. They formed committees and all they did was argue and this time the board's gonna take the lead on it. And we're gonna start with land use and we're gonna frequently come back to the board as we did with another ordinance that's on our agenda today and discuss the item so we get clear guidance on putting together some new language. Anyway, anyone else wish to speak that's in the audience here? If not, we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you. Our first Zoomer is Mr. Wymer. Please go ahead when ready.
Yes, good morning. I'm here to-
Go ahead, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I'm here to voice my support for Daniel DiAgostini and ask you to deny the appeal for the La Mesa Vineyards. When my wife and I retired, we decided to become volunteers with the Amador County Master Gardeners Program. In 2017, we volunteered to help the farms of Amador on their field trips and were introduced to Daniel DiAgostini and his Abadanza Farm, which is farmed organically and biodynamic. Daniel is well-known throughout the organic farming community and is part of the worldwide Opportunities on Organic Farms Organization. He has hosted many members throughout this country and the world to come and live and work with him, learning the techniques of this farming method. Daniel has hosted many Amador County school groups from elementary to high schools to come and learn about farming. My wife and I have assisted them many times with breaking the classes into small groups and teaching them at different stations from worm bins, composting, seed propagation, transplanting into pots, planting into the ground and ultimately harvesting what they sowed. We were impressed with the manner in which Daniel introduced these students into farming life. Daniel would greet the arriving bus of students and from there we would take a tour of the farm, asking all to remain quiet. He would point out the birds that were chirping, various pollinators for the fruits and vegetables, the butterflies, the buzzing of the bees collecting pollen, the cackling of the chickens, the sounds of crickets and grasshoppers and the beating wings of a hummingbird. These natural sounds are not audible when drowned out by the sounds of live music, laughter and loud conversations coming just a few yards away at the tasting room. This farm is a magnet for those who wish to learn organic farming methods and gain an appreciation for how we are part of a complex, interwoven ecosystem. Daniel and his family have lived there on this property for generations. To allow more music events would be like allowing a music venue at a place of reflection such as Walden Pond. I have no doubt that the owner of La Mesa Vineyards understood the limitations of his property zone, R-1A, as a single-family residential agriculture. He was allowed to get a conditional use permit, which he applied for by limiting the hours of the operations and the number of music events. To now claim that he is at a competitive disadvantage appears to be disingenuous. Too often, money talks and those with lesser means are worn down, excuse me, are worn down by multiple lawsuits or other methods of harassment. Approval of this appeal?
You lost you, Mr. Wymer.
It appears that he has dropped off.
Maybe I didn't answer the phone.
Take the next Zoomer, Mr. Heinrich, I believe. Please go ahead when ready.
Yes, good morning. My name is Antonia DeHeinrich and I'm the winemaker for La Mesa Vineyards. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. Go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Combe's behalf via Zoom today. I'm here to support La Mesa Vineyards and to ask for you to please amend their operating permit to the proposed set of conditions. I started making wine with Combe when he only had a few small tanks of wine in his garage. So, seeing this winery grow to what it's become today makes me proud to be part of his team. The wines we make for La Mesa are increasingly growing in popularity and this beautiful tasting room he built is the perfect venue to try these wines. Try something different in Amador County while enjoying the view, connecting with the owner and other winery guests. So, in addition to generating county tax revenues, La Mesa actually preserves agricultural land from residential development. I think a winery is actually potentially a welcome neighbor compared to what could potentially be there instead. There are very few opportunities like La Mesa and Amador that generate, or Chernando Valley particularly, that generate good jobs locally and I don't believe Lanell or Jesus, sorry Lanell if I'm speaking on your behalf, would travel to Sutter Creek for work potentially, not for a full-time job. The viability of La Mesa's business is not only important to us personally for employment, but also for the wine industry in Amador. If Amador County wants to continue to welcome visitors to wine country, the new tasting rooms that come in deserve reasonable business conditions that allow them to contribute towards the county's success. I believe the increase in conditions La Mesa is seeking currently are minimal, thus keeping additional impact on neighbors really little to none. I hope you will join me in supporting La Mesa's request. Thank you very much for having me here today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dean, please go ahead when ready.
Thank you. My name is Matthew Dean and I live at 1299 Fisk Steiner Road, so not very far from the vineyard. I'm asking you to please approve his request. A couple of things have occurred to me. One, that normal conversation ranges from sixty to seventy decibels, so the music he's asking for is not far above that. That's normal conversation. Secondly, Mr. DiAgostini, I appreciate his wanting to help have full-time jobs, so certainly there should be- So certainly there should be restriction in terms of days of operation should be lifted. So those full-time jobs could be provided. Third, wineries take time to grow. You don't instantly have. You don't instantly have new members. You don't instantly have a wide audience. It takes time and.
Mr. Dean. Pardon the interruption, but we're having problems hearing you through our end. If it's a little muscled, you could please repeat yourself.
Um, so one, I'm asking you to please approve Mr. Combs' application. Two, I'd like to point out it takes time to build wineries and to build the membership and to sell the wines. Three, five days of operation or more, that allows for full-time employment. I have heard nobody speak against full-time employment. Certainly that's a reasonable request. The sound of, the sound level for the music, normal conversations run from 60 to 70 decibels. 75 decibels is the bottom line for chamber music. And these requests are very, very reasonable. Um, he's a good member of the community. I think that you want new winemakers. You want to grow this. What I tell people who come to visit me is if you really want to come to the original wine country. You come to Shenandoah Valley. There are vines here that predate anything in Napa or Sonoma. Um, thank you to the miners in the Gold Rush era. So I encourage you to please approve his request. It's certainly very reasonable. I do think the board should go back as you're planning and come up with a set of guidelines. To facilitate the Planning Commission being able to uniformly address different items. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your. Um, again, I urge you to approve his request.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is Ms. Tiara. Please go ahead when ready.
Hi, my name is Meredith Tiara and I'm speaking on behalf of the Foothill Conservancy today. So I just have a comment that it might be preferable to hold off on permitting any new tasting rooms. Or expanding operating conditions at existing taste rooms until the board, staff. And Planning Commission can develop clearer guidance on how to decide what can and cannot occur in different zoning classifications. It is, it is reasonable to evaluate specific settings and impacts to neighbors when granting conditional use permits for R1A parcels. But this is clearly not being done consistently or carefully enough, resulting in problems like the one before you today. A county wine, winery ordinance would help solve some of these issues and I encourage you to put this off. This permit approval off until you can develop an ordinance and make it more clear for winery operators on R1A properties. And thank you for listening to my comments.
Thank you. And I'll just say that developing an ordinance may, may not help the applicant today. It could actually hurt, so. Put that out there. And who else? Who's next?
Thank you. We have Ms. Slater. Please go ahead.
Hi there. Yeah, my name is Tara Slater and I am an employee of La Mesa. And I greatly appreciate being able to work so close to my home. Um, at La Mesa, we are very considerate of our neighbors and constantly creating processes to impact, to mitigate the impact, impact to them. And I agree with Antonia that we are very much a welcomed neighbor compared to what possibly else could be next to Mr. DiAgostini. Um, all of the requests and modifications directly affect my ability to bring in more income. Um, and better support my family. Uh, neighboring wineries have much greater operating permissions. And La Mesa is asking for minimal, and I'll repeat, minimal modifications. These modifications will allow success for La Mesa, but also allow success for me as a resident in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitman, please go ahead when ready.
Hi there. My name is Aaron Whitman. I'm one of the, I'm the beer maker and a partner at Break Even Beer Makers in Amador City. Uh, and I'm calling in support of Mr. DiAgostini today. Um, I met Daniel just by happenstance. I saw his sign when I was driving up Shenandoah. Valley Road one day and just pulled in because I like biodynamic farms and we quickly hit off a friendship. We are currently going through opening our brewery in Amador City. And I have to say that when we purchased our property, we were distinctly aware of the limitations, the zoning limitations. Uh, that came along with our property purchase because, well, our business depends upon operating within those parameters. We do as a business sponsor some events to bring in clientele. But, uh, we are working with Amador City on this and this has been something that we've been working on. Since we've purchased the property to make sure we're seeing eye to eye with them. So asking, we are not requesting to change any zoning laws or anything like that after the fact. Because we went into this operation, uh, eyes wide open as far as what we can do and what we can't. Um, one final note is just looking at the videos that Daniel's sent. Uh, in the packet is you can really see how much, uh, having neighbors, La Mesa as a neighbor does impede upon. The peacefulness of, of his property that he's worked very hard to, um, to build with pollinators and attract. Local flora and fauna and really build that up. And, um, this is something really that, that cannot be replaced down the line. Whereas, you know, we could build more tasting rooms. We, we really can't. Reclaim the peacefulness that, uh, that is remaining in this rural, rural area of California. So. Yeah, please consider, uh, yeah, denying Combs' request. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn, please go ahead when ready.
Yes, my name is Jackie Vaughn and, um, I've been to Mr. Dagostini's ranch and it disturbs me to see what's happened there. Um, a couple of things, I think the Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission really need to come up with a standard set of rules. That can be applied to these, these types of incidences, uh, so that. We don't have to try to deny or approve something where someone has encroached on someone else's. Uh, life, uh, to the extent that it has affected Mr. Dagostini. I've been on his ranch. I applaud him for what he is doing. A wonderful person. I, you know, I applaud the employees for coming up, but, you know, La Mesa, there's a lot of other vineyards out there that do their tasting in Sutter Creek. Perhaps you could find a place in Sutter Creek. The other thing is. When someone is going to build. On a vineyard. And put their tasting room. And they have a consideration of where they're going to taste it or put it. Maybe there ought to be some rules and regulations as to how close they can be to someone else's property. I looked up on Google Maps and looked at all the wineries in Shenandoah Valley. And nowhere did I see a tasting room. That was so close to somebody's home. I request that you deny this application. Thank you.
You. Anyone else in the audience that has not spoken that wishes to speak on this issue? All right then, I'm looking for a motion by the board to close the public hearing. So move?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Thank you. You made the motion, Jeff. So you made the motion.
Brian.
Supervisor Neto, Supervisor Crew made the second. So with that, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Most carries. Back to the board for discussion.
Well, I guess I'll start off. One thing I will say is. Probably the most complaints I've heard. As far as around the wineries is probably the music, um, just in general. People love it, but a lot of people don't like it too. It's something you can't. Uh, it's something you can't get away from. I'd also wonder maybe Mr. Legu can look at, it's probably a big ask, but something. It might serve him well in the future if he ever came back at some point. He might look at, see if there's a way to modify your parking lot because it is. Pretty close to Daniel's home. That's. I can see where. Probably he may, I maybe, I guess you're talking to Daniel, maybe you didn't talk to him enough or he didn't say enough. He probably shouldn't have put the parking that close to his house. Also, I do think, um, I can see where, you know, as far as use permit talks about the maximum six special events per year. Um, I could see that if I was him, when I went in for the use permit. I would have perceived that as being six special events, separate ones. Um. I think there's a problem there with, with that. I think, I see, I could see that should probably be modified. To reflect probably, um, the big crush in behind the cellar door. And then with, um, four events after that. I, I don't, I don't see. Any, any other asks. Um, I think, uh. You know, your home is your castle. Um, I think Mr. DiAgostini's home has been there, been there and I need some recognition, um, his peace, peace of mind. So that's kind of what I have to say for right now.
Follow up on Brian's, um. I think the AVA days being waived, not counted against the days is a reasonable request. And, uh, I actually think that five days a week instead of four is a reasonable request. But I can't get past the noise after five in the music, same as Supervisor Neto. It's just such an intrusion. I have a hard time believing that they didn't know the conditions of the permit before they built the building. I've never been quite clear on how that worked. So. That's where I am.
Well, I will say, um, I'm gonna do a Supervisor Neto thing is that. I've always had a problem with art. You know, I can't, um, can't admire art as much it is. Um, I can admire the mechanics of it, how much it takes to work and do the job, but I've never been able to enjoy art. But the one thing I can say about Mr. DiAgostini's property. He has, it's a very artistic area. And it is an area that took a lot of mechanics to get it to built. And then to have. This facility sitting next door to it. And then to expect, you know, I, I will say, you know, Saturday was, was interesting to listen to that music and where the man was work. What are you, 80 feet away from me when I was trying to ring your gongs? That he couldn't hear me. So that's the noise, you know, we're, we're talking decibels here, but somehow it wasn't matched up to what this person's home. And I sat, like I said, I sat in his driveway for 20 minutes and then I toured his property for the next two hours. As we, we talked about different functions, how he does things. He's a pure naturalist. And I admired that. I admire also businesses, you know, so it's a hard, hard decision to sit there and go with. But the problem that I have is. Mr. Legu, you know, was friends with Mr. DiAgostini and he should have seen it the same way I did. That this is a person who had a facility, I mean, has his ranch sitting, farm, excuse me, farm. And the way he runs it and to have that facility moved right next door. I think that was an error. I think whoever advised Mr. Legu to, to put that facility there was, was, was totally incorrect. So that's it.
Uh, point of clarification Supervisor Neto. Um, when you say events, you're, you're willing to permit the big crush in the behind cellar door, which are multi-day events. So then there would be four events left over.
Correct.
Okay, but then could, could the proponent or the owner, Mr. Legu, say, well, my events are. The other four events are gonna be five-day events. So that could be 20, 20 days total.
That's probably a good question. I can talk to council about that and.
You can define.
There, there should, it should be probably clarified like one, one day with a, um, per event and maybe a, a set time.
I guess from my point of view, I think maybe, um, you know, the tasting room probably got placed in the, in the wrong spot. Um, a little too close. It's unfortunate. We probably should have had a rule. Um, you can't have a tasting room or business that close and whatever. So, um, that's probably what's created a lot of the issue here. Um, I'm. Willing to consider allowing Mr. Legu to participate in the big crush and behind the cellar door, not. Every AVA event. I know, I know those are the only two they do. But, um, but I think whatever, if, if that's the route this board wants to go, I think that should be specific to our motion. And what goes in the permit that it's those two events specifically. And, um, I believe that Daniel said that if he had his events up at his. Winery, his wine facility, that that probably would not interfere or cause a problem. So if there's a way to make that happen. Without creating additional problems. So if you wanted to do your barrel tasting, I think that. That's something to look into, but I don't know. If the shuttling is going to create more of a problem or not. So I'm, I'm open to that as well.
I asked for clarification on the, um. Your wine, uh, club member days. Are those one day, two days? So that's because those two days are an event. Okay. Okay, if you could repeat that typically.
Yeah, they're typically two days because, uh, I mean, there's, the clubs get quite large as Jeff Prunk was pointed out. He's got almost 5,000 members. So you need to split them up over several days.
Are, are you counting those two days as one event?
I count them as two separate events because the way the county has told me my use permit works, they are event days. And so I, you know, I, if we do four quarters as typically is done, that's eight event days for wine club.
How many event days are, are you permitted?
Six.
Six.
And I can do none for my club if I, I shouldn't be forced to choose between joining the AVA and not having a wine club. So as I join, as I have joined the AVA, I'm actually on the board of it. I do a lot of contributions there. Um, all of those, almost all of those days are taken up by the AVA days.
And I, it was said earlier, maybe you shouldn't belong to the, to the, uh, Vetners and, and I disagree with that. I think. I belong to a lot of organizations and I, I tend to think people belong to them for the right reason. They want to contribute. They want to make things better. Yes, it probably brings a little more light on you, but it also brings, uh, maybe negative light sometimes too because you're making decisions that affect everyone in the association.
Yeah, the AVA is great from a marketing perspective. They have regular visitors, something like 15,000 follow their, your social media sites. They've got email campaigns that go on. They, they amplify, uh, things that we're doing and, um, help communicate to those people. That regularly come to Shenandoah Valley. So excluding ourselves and, and many of the R1A wineries are not members of the AVA. And probably facing the same issues that we do. I think it severely hampers their ability to be successful. There are 50 members in the AVA. There's a lot of sharing of ideas. There's kind of collaboration. Like one example is they've just created a new thing called Access Amador, which is kind of an exclusive Thursday event. You come to Amador on a Thursday, you get a special treat at one of the wineries. So we actually do. A library flight of our wines, which normally we would not do the other days. So that helps pull people from normally coming Saturdays when it's really crowded to coming on a Thursday. Uh, Wine Wednesday is another example of that. So, so being part of that community, not only marketing wise, but. Uh, technical wise, that, you know, you get a lot of technical expertise about wine making and sharing of expertise, uh, that, that we benefit from. So. So those are, those are important elements and that's why I've chosen actually to. So, so those are, those are important elements, and that's why I've chosen actually to be on the board of the AVA. They asked me early on, I, you know, I, I was kind of busy launching our, our operation, but they, uh, Jack, the, the executive director approached me and, uh, said, you know, you could make a great contribution, and I've been working on the strategic plan, which helps, uh, shape the vision of, of the Amador wineries and, um, uh, you know, addressing a lot of the, the concerns that, that people have, like traffic. Um, you know, how can we attract more, uh, interesting customers, like higher yield, rather than just, you know, more feet on the ground, clogging up the streets? Uh, so that's part of the plan that we're, we're working on right now. So, so to be able to, to, um, not be part of the AVA, because I'm limited then with my club, which is so important to the business, uh, I shouldn't have to make that choice. I mean, I should be able to choose both to be successful. And, and that's what I've asked for, basically, by excluding those AVA events, then I free up events for my wine club, which, um, which are so important. Uh, and yes, you know, those club events are run during the day, they're run from the, you know, up to five PM. Uh, as Jeff, Jeff pointed out, Jeff Runquist, uh, he does all of his events within the day, and that's my plan as well. But there are some special, um, occasions where you're trying to recruit new members or treat your longstanding members to some special things, like you can have a wine maker dinner. And that's why I requested, uh, a few evening events. Um, if, I, I think, if, if music is the controversial piece of those evening events, I think I would have no problem in saying, fine, for those four evening events, we would have no live music after five o'clock. How's that for a compromise?
I don't know, it sounds like, it sounds like the, just people speaking is enough to annoy, to annoy Mr. DiAgostini. So I, I can't speak for him too much, and I'll let you up in a second, Daniel, but, um,
Good, no, it's just. I still want to ask, the, the four days that you have those evening events, could they be held at your warehouse?
Our warehouse is a winery, it's not really set up to be ADA compatible and all the issues that we had to go through with parking and septic and everything else. Our tasting room, you know, was carefully planned and designed in accordance with the planning department to address all of those issues. So while it's nice to think that we could, uh, you know, have some standing events and maybe some things, it's just, it's not really equipped for, uh, all of the issues like ADA and, and facilities for parking and things like that. So we end up having to shuttle people back and forth from our tasting room, uh, up to the, to the top. And, um, and there's really no space to park up top, there's, there's limited, you know, to twelve or so spots. Uh, so it's difficult to, um, you know, it's not impossible, but it's just difficult to do an event up there.
It's complicated, but, I mean, my wife and I belong to several wine clubs here. We also belong to some in Napa, and we started those forty years ago. But one of those we started was, uh, Barnett, Helen Fiona Barnett, who we've got to know because they have wine club events at their home in, uh, in Napa Valley. So, uh, it can be done, and, uh, I would encourage you to try and work with Daniel, I think you two will still be friends. Maybe not today, but in the future, you'll, you'll still be friends, you can still talk about ways to, to work together or try and modify the situation. Um, I think some kind of a barrier, but I saw you once, Daniel, when someone suggested putting up a wall there. I don't think that's the solution you're looking for, but, uh, yes, it would work, but probably not the, the, uh, best, uh, look to put in the neighborhood there.
Yeah, hopefully, the oleander hedge, we planted six hundred feet long, uh, you know, it'll come up, it'll be solid green. Uh, Daniel had, uh, talked about doing, uh, olive trees early on, but olive trees don't have greenery all around. You can see through the bottom of them pretty much. So, uh, a, a, a kind of a solid green hedge makes, makes more sense, and I think it's more aesthetically pleasing for both of us.
And you're allowed four days a week now, correct?
Correct.
And I know when I had met with you and Mr. Swett, you suggested the, the holidays be allowed, Monday holidays, not to be in that four, to allow you to operate those, on those holidays. Uh, what are there per year, probably, uh, four or five of those?
Yeah, like, for example, Christmas was on a Saturday this past December, and people had Monday off, and it made sense to open Monday, even Tuesday, you know, people were.
Well, that happens for the county, uh, so Thanksgiving, um, Christmas, Memorial Day, what else? Um, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, that's five.
New Year.
So six, um.
Yeah.
I don't, I, I think that, to me, that is an acceptable compromise, um. And I'll, I'll finish with you, and then I'll give a few more comments.
Okay, and just on, on the days of operation, two important issues there. One is, you know, being able to, not just holidays, but like, for example, Access Amador, the AVA initiative that they're doing to bring people Wednesday and Thursday. I'd love to be part of that, and I think we have some special things to offer. And so being able to, you know, to be there and be open when people are at, in the valley. Uh, and the second is full-time employment. With four days, we cannot offer full-time employment, it's extremely challenging, uh, labor market out there. Took us a good year to get our staff together. And I would love to, just like Jesus, our vineyard manager, who's with us full-time, he has benefits, he has a 401K, he has medical plan, he's got, um, you know, holiday pay, vacation pay, um, he's, um, he's really happy. I mean, he did not have that happiness in his life when he was working as a contract laborer before.
But with the Access Amador, you're talking how many more days, uh, conceptually?
That's basically weekly. It runs every day on a Thursday or Wednesday. They're, they're, um, experimenting with it right now. And, uh, so that, you know, I would, I would like to do it when I can. If it, if they shifted to a Wednesday, then I can't do it, because I, I'm just not able to open right now. Uh, so, um, so I'd like to have that flexibility, uh, to, to, uh, take advantage of, you know, when people are here. And it's, it's sometimes seasonal too, like wintertime, it's very light traffic. Uh, you know, the impact is minimal. Thursday, Friday, we might have ten to fifteen visitors. Um, Saturday's the big day when, when people come. So in the winter, it may not make sense to open. So, you know, despite, I think, uh, if you look at, I think I, I surveyed forty wineries uh, who are allowed to open seven days a week, maybe half of them actually do seven days, and the other half don't. Uh, but that's a choice they have, and, and they can adjust their hours, uh, based on seasonality. When the summer hits, they'll go back to seven, and then when the wintertime is on, they'll, they'll be at three or four.
I will tell you, when I go to Napa, or I don't go to Sonoma much, but when I go to Napa, I, I won't go on a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We plant at midweek. We make sure the wineries are gonna be open, most of them are, but it's just a mess over there on the heavy traffic days.
Yep.
Uh, that's, to me, it lightens up the traffic, but, I mean, that's something Mr. DiAgostini has to address, because, again, the music's gonna go on, so.
Yeah, those days, uh, off Saturdays are just music playing on the stereo, and that's very soft. Um, even Daniel admitted, we've, we've adjusted things to, to accommodate his requests. Um, live music is accompanying tasting, and, uh, for example, this weekend, um, on the patio, as our singer was singing, I took a read. I have a little decibel meter, uh, thing, app on my phone, and the music got no louder than sixty-five decibels on the patio. Seventy-five at the property line is, is a high mark. We're not talking, you know, rock concerts with ACDC. We're talking an acoustic guitar player, slight amplification, singing, and, uh, for the enjoyment of our guests who are tasting.
When you say patio, is that the terrace?
Terrace, yeah.
Okay.
I have to agree with something he said, though, is, uh, some of the singers have a, seems like they have a limited amount of songs they know, and they have to listen to, to one song on an hourly basis, probably gets a little.
Yeah, it's true, I mean, we try really hard to seek out artists that are kind of diamonds in the rough, and, uh, so we're constantly adjusting our music program. I think only maybe seven artists came back this year for, that were there last year that we really enjoyed. And so, uh, you know, we're constantly getting feedback from our guests and, and others and making adjustments. But, uh, but we put a lot of time into finding great talent, um.
Also, just a, uh, question too, you're talking about events. What events would you normally be holding, what are you looking at?
So, uh.
That are important to you.
The, the eight event days would be wine club release parties. So basically, every quarter, uh, you know, the wine club members come, and, uh, you have food and some live music during, uh, normal business hours. They come and pick up their wine, and they enjoy, you know, tasting some special wines that we have selected from our library, or barrel tasting, or the new releases. And then they head home at normal business hours. So those are eight of the twelve. The other four are special events that I'm, I would like to do, like, for example, a wine maker dinner or two. And, and I'd even envisioned, you know, involving Daniel in something like that. He's, he has got a beautiful organic farm right next to us, and we could get fresh veggies and plan something special. Maybe have Daniel talk about bio, dynamic farming, um, and that would be a dinner. So that would end no later than at nine o'clock. Most people finish dinner earlier than that and head back. And, uh, again, the, the vast majority of people coming to our tasting room, at least, um, eighty to ninety percent, are from out of the area, so they're from Sacramento, sometimes from Reno. They can't stay late, they have to drive home, uh, and, uh, um, you know, they, they're not interested in, in kind of long ten PM, eleven PM kind of events. So those are some examples of, of types of events. I think that helps us grow our wine club, which is such an important piece of the business. Uh, and, uh, you know, in, in steady kind of state, five years, seven years out, the wine club is probably eighty percent of the business, between club members, uh, repeat purchases, and then coming back to the tasting room and bringing friends, and it's kind of a nice virtuous, uh, cycle there. So, so those are the only type of events. I have no interest in weddings, and I have no interest in rock concerts, that's not what we're asking for. We're asking for wine club, uh, related things, and, um, people that are, are not wine club members that are thinking of joining, that we can recruit, uh, and grow that business.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
I'm gonna give a few comments before Daniel comes up. Um, you know, in our discussion we just had, we're, we're talking about expansion. And, um, that clearly did not seem to be too acceptable to the, the neighbor. And in an R1A zoning, uh, I really think that, uh, some analysis should have been done before the development. I, I also think, I understand, I think, why they put the tasting room where they did. It seemed like a flat spot where an equipment shed or something was, was there before, so seemed like an ideal spot, but, uh, there wasn't a lot of consideration for, for the neighbor there. I, I already mentioned the, uh, concept of what they do over in Napa Valley at One Winery, and, uh, you know, at that location, the Barnets let people go into their home, and actually with no security. And the, the wine club members actually can go into their home, and that's where the restrooms are, they don't have, uh, portables. Frankly, um, I think the the wine club release, those two days at a time should count as one event. And I think the blending, which should be synonymous with what's been allowed before, with the Amador Vintners Association sponsored events, those two, the, um, Big Crush, and, uh, what's the other one?
Behind the cellar door.
Behind the cellar door. Participation in events was coincided with the Amador Vintners Association sponsored events. Each one of those should be counted as one event, even though they're multiple days. But yes, it is allowing an expansion on the days, but I think it's, it should have been done in the first place. I think it makes sense, common sense, to have the, the two days at a time, or the, um, wine club events count as one event, so two days count as one day, and then the, um, other events, either three days count as one day, or two days count as one day, depending on how long each one of those run. Uh, at this time, I'm just, I'm not willing to go to five days. I, I realize there's advantages, but you kind of, you, you get into a zoning on a piece of property, and you know somewhat at least what's gonna be allowed. And, uh, discussions should have taken place with, uh, the county, and just in your business plan, you should have realized, this is R1A, I have major restrictions here.
And I think that's real critical to Richard, it is R1A, you know, um, and if, if it goes too far out, there's two things. One is, number one is, um, I sympathize with Daniel's case, uh, he made a compelling argument. And number two is, uh, we, if, if we open this up like you'd like to have Mr. Lagu, it'd probably open up Pandora's box maybe a little bit, and I, I don't want to do that.
And that's what we're hoping to address by digging into this, uh, winery ordinance and, uh, the, all the other parts of it that have been discussed, definitions and such. But, um, maybe in the future, um, there could be more discussions between Mr. DiAgostini and Mr. Lagu and come up with some compromises. Uh, I like the idea of doing things in association with Abadanza Farms. I, whether Mr. DiAgostini would like that, I don't know, maybe you can come up and comment on a few things.
Thanks for the opportunity to, to come up and say a few things. Um, I would welcome that down the line. I hate the situation we're in, it breaks my heart. Um, and I think that would be a wonderful, um, compliment, uh, for both of us to be able to do something and, and use produce right out of my garden, and let me make one killer salad for everybody and get them eating those flowers. But, um, and I left that door open. I put that to a letter to all of you that, no, let's keep it four days a week. I have no problem at all with sliding that around when there's those Monday holidays. That's perfectly agreeable to me. As I said to them, you can shift on those days, don't open on Thursdays, go Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. And now I'm hearing about this Wednesday coming to the county, uh, what, what's it called?
Uh, Access Amador.
Access Amador. Um, well, maybe on those days, you're closed on Thursdays, and you can participate with the extra crowd that might be coming on Access Wednesday, take a break. Uh, I'd like to keep it to four days, because when there's people in his parking lot, those are cars on my fence. Four days. You turn it into the fifth day, that's one more day with people, strangers walking up and down. He's a dog-friendly place. Talk to their animals. Not everybody's gonna participate. Some people just like to take a walk around and, and hang out while their friends are drinking the wine. That's more strangers walking right along my fence. Again, five to six years from now, if the oleanders get water, if we get rain ever again, got fifty-two hundreds, by the way, at my place out of this last two days, twenty-eight degrees this morning, grapes are getting.
It's cold.
Cold. Uh, maybe we can look at that one as we go down the road. But right now, every day that I don't have a stranger in my yard, I feel more comfortable. So I'd like to keep that to four. Um, we need to keep thinking about, in this county, the amount of traffic we take out to the country, particularly for the benefit, and these events are not gonna benefit the county. They're gonna benefit the winery owner for their special events, and then those people go home. But the, the roads out there, you're, we're extending people deeper into the Shenandoah Valley, drive up and down that road, and you can see a lot of fences get taken out every once in a while. And the roads are pretty rough condition right now, gas is really high. I don't know, you know, the less I see of all these excess special events, the better in my heart. And the employees, besides Jesus, Jesus is full-time, he's getting his benefits. And I've known Jesus for many years, and I'm so happy for him. And all your other employees, um, who are right now on four, my heart goes out to you. I like you all, I like them all, and maybe comb, uh, there's a lot of work in that vineyard, maybe that job subscription can be a five-day job, four-day tasting room, and one day, who knows, cellar rats, um, helping in the winery, so they can have a five-day week. I mean, there's options, let's be creative, and, and, uh.
That's, that's reality, there's, there's a way to make five days a week, or, or four tens.
Without being open for customers, you know, there's plenty of work to do. Um, so, uh, I applaud that, that he's, he's got Jesus. Um, so I applaud that, that he's, he's got Jesus going full-time with benefits. Cause my son worked in tasting rooms, and bingo, man, thirty-nine and a half hours, but not that forty. And so, um, anyway, I don't think I need to say anymore. I, I...
You should work in a tasting room. You'd sell more wine than anybody.
You know?
Except when the bachelorette parties come. I'm sorry, ladies. They're the worst because it's pretty crazy.
Okay. Shh. Thank you. Um, all right, um, Board, time for a decision. I think we've all said our piece here on Mr. Gillock.
I just, um, you know, as, you know, some of the comments, um, relate on the, you know, trying to accommodate the, the Vintner events, and, and changing the way we talk about, uh, days or events. And, and I would suggest, um, you know, the planning department has used their description and their, um, definition of what an event is and what a day is for years, and they apply it, you know, out there, everywhere. So I wouldn't, um, I would avoid trying to say, well, this, this event, uh, that's three days, is really only, only counts as one. I'd, I'd, what I would suggest is maybe, um...
Counting the days.
Saying, just saying, you get, you get up to six additional events for, for these two Vintner, the, the, the Behind the Cellar Door and the Big Crush. So you keep it consistent with the events that are counted each day. But that's just a suggestion. I don't know if planning wants to talk about it.
Chuck Beatty with Planning Department again. The reason that we've, uh, considered multiple day events as being multiple days, that we count them as a single event each day, particularly with R one A, uh, use permits, is Sequo requires us to evaluate those impacts. And so if an event that's now two days somehow grows into a week-long event, let's say the Big Crush becomes a week-long event, or two weekends, then we haven't evaluated the impacts of those additional days. That's why we keep it to, you know, an event is a day. So if it's a, if the Big Crush is three days, that's three events. That's, that's why it's done that way.
So he's got how many now? Six?
Right now, it's, it's six events annually with up to a hundred guests.
So six days.
Six, six days.
So in order to accommodate, the way he says right now, he's got, um, eight, eight wine club events? Is that right? That would be sixteen days then. You call that each one an event.
Well, right now, before it's amended, that, there are six events annually. So when, and his, part of his complaint was, Big Crush and Behind the Cellar Door takes up five of those. Even those are two events, but they take up five days.
Right. But he needs eighty vit days for the wine club release.
It sounded like the compromise from what was originally requested was eight release party days, and four other event days that might be winemaker dinners. Those are twelve, plus Big Crush and, and Behind the Cellar Door, which might be another six days.
Well, I think not all the wine, uh, wine club release would have to be two days, I don't, I wouldn't think. I don't see any...
So I mean, that's what he's saying. Do, I think he's limited on the amount of traffic he can have up there at one time.
That, and that's the way Sequo requires us to evaluate it.
Okay. I, I, yeah, I see what you're saying, Richard. Um... Yeah, and, uh, as far as going to five days, I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't see it. I under- understand where you're coming from, Pat, but I mean, I think I would agree with Mr. DiAgostini in that. Um, as far as having a few more of the events, I think it's probably, I do have concerns over traffic on that, that road there, that, that one turn. Um, but there's, I guess we're having a regular tasting or an event. I've never seen your events, how much, I don't know if Daniel can answer, or if Mr. Lagoo can answer. How much traffic you have backing up on Shenandoah Road, if ever?
There's, there's never traffic backing up on Shenandoah, so we're kind of, our commercial, we have a commercial encroachment, which we had to build as part of the condition of, of building the, the tasting room. It runs a hundred fifty feet on each side of our driveway, so people can pull off and, and come in. We have, uh, roughly about a quarter mile of driveway to go up to the tasting room. So there's plenty of buffer for people to, you know, be absorbed in the, um, uh, coming off, off the road. Entering Shenandoah, despite that curve, it's kind of pretty far down the road. You have a pretty clear line of sight, both sides. And so there's never been a situation that I've seen where anybody's queued up, uh, coming off the road and going in. We tend to run our events as, as much as possible to try to space people out as they're coming. Um, and that helps a lot, too. So, so a combination of the commercial encroachment, the way the driveway is kind of centered between that hill, that curve, and, and the next curve near Daniel's house. Uh, and also the, um, uh, the long driveway that we have allows for a buffer to the tasting room has, uh, had, in, in my opinion, never created any problem, even in the biggest events that we've had, like Big Crush.
Are the, the Big Crush and, and Behind the Cellar Door, are they two days or three days?
Last year, they were three days each. Uh, so Behind the Cellar Door was three, Big Crush was three. This year, Behind the Cellar Door was two, and Big Crush will be three.
So anything we'd say if we approved that would have to coincide with the actual event for approval of the event days?
Unless we just excluded them from the count because they've changed the way they do them. They're not just a free-for-all. The way I understand it, you have to make an appointment to come at, say, eleven A M. on Saturday, and then there's a forty-five minute, and then the next group, there's fifteen minute kind of, some are coming and some are leaving.
Exactly.
So you don't have that hundreds of people at one place. So I would just exclude those, and that would give you six right there.
So Richard, you're talking about like eight for the, um, wine club as far as re- new releases?
Those, that, those would have to be eight event days.
Yeah.
Plus the participation in those two events, the Big Crush and Behind the Cellar Door for the Amador Vintner Association sponsored events.
And then maybe...
However many days those are.
Could you hold those in conjunction with a dinner, too?
Uh, well, if I was allowed to do evening, I could, yeah. If those, if, if those eight could also be evening, and, uh...
Why would you wanna do that?
No, no, it might be, that'd be a problem.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, let's make a decision here, gentlemen. I, I think, I did not hear a concurrence from the Board that five days was acceptable.
No, it's not. I think the shift, um, on the holiday...
It's the reality of the business world, but...
Yeah.
Well, but moved into an R one A zone, too.
Oh, yeah, but not all of them are only four days a week.
That's true.
You know, trying, I know, trying to hire part-time help compared to full-time is a complete different ballgame. Now, Daniel, I might ask you a question. You're concerned about the four against five days. But Combe has said that if noise and the music is the issue, that they could eliminate that after five, if I heard him right. So in your case, would you trade the fifth day to not have any music after five? So you'd have peaceful evenings?
There's no music.
No music already.
Right now.
But in his permit that he's looking for, it some is into nine o'clock.
That's, fifth day is people, traffic.
All right, I'd just, I just, I'm making sure.
That's what I wanna point out, that one can't always control their customers. The model of wanting to keep drinking wine and enjoyment, sometimes people get inebriated. And they've come to the third winery or fourth winery, and that becomes an issue. Also, one more day of, that's what I'm talking about, people, strangers. Right now, it's four. But on any given day of those four, there can be a drunken fight between a husband and wife, that I've heard. There can be dogs barking because more than one dog happens to be there at the same time.
Well, that'd be true in two days.
You're asking for me to take one more day.
Ask if, if you're willing to trade a parakeet for a turkey.
Yeah. It's four days right now. I don't wanna jump into a five-day situation. And that's what I'm saying there. And I do say that you can have creatively, all his employees, perhaps another job on a day of the week, that they're there, but they're not open to the public.
Yeah, and you didn't see a problem as far as like shifting one of the four days to a holiday?
Nope.
Okay. That seems reasonable.
And, um, take advantage of when the people are out visiting the county. Um, I'm, just to the side, keep eroding the quietness and stillness in our open spaces. The more we attract people out. I know agrotourism is a big talking point, but let's not forget the ag, and what this county really has that is so unique, which is our open space, the sounds of silence out there, too. And that's something that's a full-time resonant. I realize it's eroding. We can't control the future. As long as I'm alive, I'd like to see us slow it down. I'm, I would love you to just say, no, you know, and let's negotiate things in the future for a dinner up at the house, or taking one of your six days, uh, or your one day, and having an event up, up on the hill, and doing that in the evening. I'm willing to thought, I said that, I've written this, but, uh, I'm not ready to give it all up right now. People change their mind and move on, and then all those rights are tagged right onto that piece of land.
You, um, and I don't know if we can even do this, but if, uh, could we build into any, uh, allowance here that Mr. Lagoo and Mr. DiAgostini could work together to have a nighttime event? Cause the concept was to have something where you discuss the, the biodynamic agriculture and things like that. I don't know what it would be, but could you build that in to any approval that allows them the discretion to work together and notify the planning department that this, they're going to have this event? Or are we stuck in...
Well, I, I mean, I suppose you could, but then, you know, you, you could have property owners, um, change, and then...
You're specifically naming the two property owners.
Well, you could have both property owners have to agree to an additional event. So if the property owners change, and the new property owner doesn't agree, then it's not eligible.
Well, what I'm talking about is that event day, maybe you expand it into an evening dinner.
Yeah.
And have them agree to that.
They both would have to agree.
Right, yeah.
That seems like a, that's a reasonable thought. I mean...
Maybe Mr. Swett says we're not interested in that.
Oh, I just, the, the thought that came to my mind, as you often see in some of your permits, that they'll use best efforts to, like, hire somebody locally or whatever, um, uh, or not drive through a certain town or something like that. So maybe if, the thought that came to my mind is if, and Mr. Forrester's been talking about maybe doing eight event days in addition to the A V A. stuff. If two of those could be in the evening, one up at the wine, winery, which I think everybody agrees is away from Mr. DiAgostini's, uh, facility, or, or home, I'm sorry. And, and the second one could be down at the tasting room, and that, um, the applicant will use best efforts to work with Mr. DiAgostini on selecting a day and using his produce and otherwise, involving him...
Best efforts don't work. I mean, it has to be, I'm sorry, but I think it has to be an agreement between the two that this is acceptable. Cause it's not allowed right now, and otherwise, I mean, there's just too much left up in the air then.
So I, I understand. I just don't, uh, maybe you could have that, uh, condition in there. I'll defer to county council this time. I was trying to find a condition that would work.
So I've never seen a condition like that. Um...
Well, why can't we be...
Well, I'm, I'm, I'll finish. I, I thi- I think it's hard to be workable, um, because, you know, the owner may, the, the winery may say, oh, we had an agreement, and then Mr. DiAgostini would say, no, we didn't have an agreement, and you had your event. I mean, it...
No, I think you could, you could solve that pretty easy. You'd have to have a letter from both parties saying, we agree to have a dinner on this date.
So ultimately, I, I think you, you, you can permit it that way, but, but, um, I guess one of the questions is, in, in the amended, um, request, did they ask for evening events? Cause I don't know if that was, was that evaluated? Was it evaluated?
Yeah, up to, till ten P M., I think, was in the original, um, original ask.
Doesn't it live or amplify music, so, yeah.
Music and all of those went to ten P M., so the assumption was there would be people there until ten.
Got it. So, uh, so as long as the Board is, is staying within the parameters of what was originally requested and evaluated and conditioned, um, and just allowing less, I think the Board can do it. I think the Board can say you can have an evening event if you have the written permission of, of the owner of the adjoining property. Um, I...
That way, I think at some point in the future, they are gonna be friendly again, and, and maybe working together. And, but it's still, it would be up to the two properties to agree, yes, this is acceptable.
And, uh, when, when you're talking about additional events, um, maybe you, uh, you could say, so, so if you didn't change, if you didn't add any events and just said, um, that the, that the, um, basically a way to exclude those, the, the Vintner events would be to say, you have, so now he has four, or no, he has...
Six.
Six. Um, and you could say, so you get six events, um, and then additional six events, uh, to accommodate those, up to si- an additional six events to accommodate the, those two events, the Big Crush and, uh, and the, um, Behind the Cellar Door. And if it's only five days, like it is this year, then they only get the five. If it's just those additional days, just to accommodate those, those events, and then they get whatever events that you, um, would be willing to allow.
Now, those events, so they would also coincide with, um, the four, four days or the shift in the holiday? And would not be additional days during the week?
It would...
So it wouldn't be going for four days?
No, you can, you can be open for four days and then have an event on the fifth day.
Exactly, yeah.
Well, with the wine club, he needs eight events.
So, well, he's asked for eight.
Right.
So you...
Make it quarterly, two a day for four quarters. So he needs a minimum of fourteen events.
You could give him two more days, so he gets to eight standalone events, plus up to six to accommodate these Vintner.
If he participates in the...
If he participates in the, in the Vintner event.
I don't even wanna put a number on that. I would rather we just say up to the days required to, um, hold the, the two A V A. events.
Well, no, because what if they changed it to two weeks?
Right, that's what I'm saying, leave it general.
But then, but then he's, he's potentially getting, you know, twelve additional days.
Why?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't see that, Richard.
Because if they, because if they add days to the Big Crush or the Vintner, or the, of those Vintner events, then he gets them automatically. And what I think planning, or I think what you need to do is be specific.
Yeah, how about between five and six additional event days to accommodate the A V A. Big Crush and Behind the Cellar Door events?
Plus whatever you wanna, wanna allow as a standalone.
Eight standalone.
Total, yeah.
We ready for a motion then? I think we're gonna narrow down. Make the motion.
I think we're pro- probably here where we can. Um, I think we'll allow them to shift, um, on holidays, so we've got four days during the week, and in one of those falls a holiday, you can shift one of those days to a holiday.
Um, we can't get you up, we gotta get you on the mic.
I just think it's more easier to write and it's more conducive for him that's, if it's four days a week and you're counting Sunday through Saturday, he can be open four days. Uh, for some reason he wanna be open Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, I, you know, then so be it. Um, I think that's the, and occasionally that'll be driven by a holiday, it might be driven by something else, Brian, other than just holiday, there might be some other reasons.
I don't see a problem with that.
Wednesday, great. Wednesday would be important, so.
Okay, that, that would work.
Hey, so that's one part of your motion.
Yeah, and then also be allowed, um, six days for like behind the cellar door and the big crush.
Five to six days is what super resurrected depending.
Yeah, five to six days, whatever it takes.
Okay, so whatever it takes.
Only for those, those two events.
Okay, I'm okay, I'm okay with that, cause I was going like five to six, but yeah, I, I see what you're saying, so depending what they have.
Up to, not whatever it takes, but up, up to.
Up to.
Six days, okay, up to six days.
Now, you're talking about the eight event days is what he said he needs for the wine club.
Yeah.
So you're including that in your motion?
Yep.
So Heather, are you crystal clear on the motion?
Yes.
Is the board crystal clear? I think I.
And he's still subject to the population number, so it's like a hundred per event?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're going from six event days to eight event days, is that it?
Yeah.
So we're adding two more.
Correct.
That's basically to cover the wine event, wine release days.
But they would end at five.
Plus the additional, up to six.
Plus the additional up to six, and then.
Yeah, we, we got that.
But it ends at, at, at five o'clock.
Ends at five unless you're, and then you're gonna talk about a con- the weather, the.
Well, they can do whatever they want between them, Kim.
Well, no, they can't.
Do we have to codify?
They have to be part of the use permit.
So that's gotta be part of the motion too, that the property owners are allowed to work together to hold a special event if both are, um, agreeable to it by, should they, should we have that in there Greg? That they actually have to sign an agreement on it?
As long as it's in writing, um, it's fine. I don't know that it has to be, like someone said, an email or something in writing from the, from, uh, Mr. DiAgostini agreeing to it.
And I guess the question I'd have on that though, would that be an additional event? Okay, otherwise you might have an agreement in writing and.
I, I think you could do that on the same day and like a dinner and just extend it into the evening if Mr. DiAgostini is agreeable to it.
I think that, that would work.
That would be one of the eight.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
The whole day.
That's, I'm, I'm good with that.
So that's, I think, four items in the motion then? And Heather, you're all clear? Board members clear on that?
Yeah.
Is there a second to the motion?
Um, just reminding you to include the recommended findings that are in the staff report as part of your motion as well.
Okay.
Reasons why we're, we're actually denying the.
You're, you're, you're actually granting the, 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 the use, well, you're not, you're, you're, so when they, once they file an appeal, all that, you're not hearing the appeal, you're hearing the use permit. So what you're gonna do is you're gonna grant, deny, or amend, or further condition the use, the amended use permit. So what you're doing is you're, you're basically granting the requested amended use permit, but in a limited, a much more limited way. So you've given them two extra days, you've allowed them to change the, be flexible about the days. You've allowed them to carve out the vintner events up to six. Um, uh, uh, to me, that's, that's granting the amended, you're amending the use permit. But he'll still have a, a use permit, but this is an amended use permit as you've, as you've indicated.
Okay, thank you. So, um, with that, so the language, the language on them work.
Yeah, and part of my motion will include the findings.
The language on them working together though, is that, is that clear? So Greg, we're crystal, crystal clear on the, uh?
And the one where, uh, nighttime?
That's up to the owners if they wish to agree to a nighttime event participating whatever fashion they wish. Is there a second to the motion?
A second.
Okay, been moved and seconded to approve the mo- the, granting the amendment as modified and stated. Now, I just wanna make sure we're good.
Um. Is it left to, is, is, so in the event, there is a evening, the event, there's an evening, uh, event?
Continuation.
Are they allowed to have music?
Continuation of the day's event into the evening.
So, so music would be contingent upon their agreement as well? If they, if, if they agreed to an evening event, they would also have to weigh in on music, otherwise music stops at five.
That's up to the owners to agree on the conditions. Okay?
Understood.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed, motion carries. Thank you all for attending this today and the board's gonna take a fifteen minute recess.
Back to order, we'll go to item five C, the planning department. Resolution of intention to amend county codes regarding the placement and occupancy of recreational vehicles as temporary dwellings and reducing square footage requirement for dwellings. Mr. Beatty.
Good afternoon, Chuck Beatty with the planning department. So this item has been on your agenda a couple of times this year already. That was the discussion of using recreation, excuse me, recreational vehicles as temporary dwellings and different options for those. You full board referred that to your land use committee supervisors act and forester to just look at that into more detail and look at the items that we already have on the books. Which are, there are three options right now in the current code to use an RV or mobile home for a temporary dwelling. One of those is a medical hardship use permit, which has a two-year term. It's issued by staff and is renewable by staff. We have a disaster hardship use permit and that has an initial term of two years. It's issued by staff and is renewable by the planning commission. And then there's one that we call trailer while building, which has a one-year term. It's renewable for six months, which is available for someone who has, who is building a house on the same parcel. There's not an option to renew that one for another six months, although we tell people usually the house is done within, within the 18-month period. Though we don't have much issue with those needing renewed, at least heretofore we haven't. And then the commission, or excuse me, the committee also was tasked with looking at some of the, addressing some of the economic hardships related, just related to home construction. Ultimately, the land use committee recommended that the full board consider a resolution of intention to amend three sections of the county code. They recommended that the disaster hardship use permit be extend their, the initial term go from two years to three years. And that that not require a 10-day notice because in most cases, any adjoining property enters are going to, it's going to be obvious of why that use permit is necessary if it's not an isolated incident. And you're dealing with people that are already in crisis mode and add in the 10-day administrative burden, that's probably not necessary. Also changing the trailer while building permit so that it runs co-terminus with an active building permit. So whether that's a six-month building permit or one that lasts 18 months or two years, if it takes that long to complete the house, as long as the building permit's valid, then the trailer while building permit's valid, it just runs, runs the same time. And then the committee also recommends changing, this was to address the economic issue, was to change the counties or the unincorporated areas minimum square footage for a single-family dwelling from 800 square feet to 360 square feet. About 360 is about the minimum you can do for a standalone single-family house because it has to have, this is for a one or two-person dwelling, a 220-square-foot living room, a separate kitchen, separate bathroom, and there are certain area clearances for the fixtures and appliances, so about 360 is the.
Basically, if you're a family, husband and wife living there, you better really like each other. In 360 square feet.
Well, they also recommended it be on a 10-acre parcel. No, I'm just kidding. So your adoption of the resolution today would direct staff to begin the revision process. It would go to the technical advisory committee first, then the planning commission and back to the board for.
So this 360 square foot, that's going to come back for a full public hearing and input process and all that?
The planning commission and the board would have to have public hearings.
Okay.
Was there any thoughts on, you know, on the 360? Because everybody talks about the value of their properties. Is there any thoughts of devaluing neighboring properties because there's tiny homes sitting on there?
That's going to, I'm sure that will be discussed during the public hearings or at least probably at even at the technical advisory committee level.
Okay.
And, 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 you know, to be fair, a lot of the subdivisions that are already in the county probably have minimums in place that are far above even 800 square feet. We just, the county can't enforce them.
Second family dwellings and what do they call them, grandmother?
ADUs, yeah, like those three dwelling units.
I mean, really, that's going to be affordable, much more affordable for somebody to put in that wants to just have a small place and not a lot to take care of.
So Chuck, do you know how much use that the small tiny homes has, have been utilized in communities where they've, they've reduced, made this reduction?
In all communities, you know, statewide where they've adopted the ADU policies that met the state guidelines, there's been an increase, you know, in the use of them. We've seen that here too. A lot of times what people are often to do or requesting to do is to build the ADU first, you know, build a small house first. And then they still got plans for what they consider the primary home and then convert the other one to a, to a secondary use.
And we don't see a, a problem down the road of these turning into VRBO type of situations?
That's always possible, but without a, without a short-term rental ordinance in place, that's, that could, could happen.
That could happen with any house, really. I know, I know a lot of younger people now, they're kind of going towards tiny homes or whatever they call them. Some people kind of, they like that. I think once they get kids, they'd probably really not like that idea. But hey, if you're single or young couple, I mean, it'd probably be a lot more affordable way to have a place.
Okay, so the language in here look acceptable then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I'll open it up at this time for public comment. Are there any public comments? No one on Zoom, so back to the board.
Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to adopt the resolution of intention, do the code amendment process.
All right, moved by supervisor Renato, second by supervisor Crew to approve, to approve the resolution of intention. Any further discussion?
Just a, a quick step back to the solar, we have been receiving the benefit of the, it's been generating power, but since it still hasn't been finalized yet, we have, the clock hasn't started on our repayment, so been working for free for, for a couple months now.
The debt service owes still trigger this December.
It, this?
Yeah, next, next, I can't remember.
Yes, in December of twenty-two.
Yeah.
Correct.
December twenty-two. We still haven't figured out the PG&E bills either, that's, that's very complicated, that's another issue, but we'll get, get you a report on that when we get that figured out, on how we're actually saving money and what that all means. We've got the, as I said, the Sheriff's Office Evidence Storage Buildings, that's in process right now, and the probation, water building intrusion, the lift some for pumps for the SO, the dispatch remodel, and the Wicklow Way property of doing some signage and some other securing of that property for the homeless that we clean, the homeless camps that we cleaned up last year, we're wrapping that up. So those are kind of some of the things that are going on.
I would keep an eye on that, because some of the businesses down below, I've seen a large accumulation of trash behind the building.
Which building?
Kmart, the, not Kmart, the, where the El Torre restaurant is back there, that's where they're finding a lot of trash now, so I would keep an eye on it.
I was down, I was down behind Kmart, it's the reason I ask you, I was down behind Kmart and Walmart, just, I think Tuesday or Wednesday last week, checking that out, because Walmart now has initiated vacating their little piece in between the bridge and county property there, so they're, they're clearing that out, so I'll, I'll pay attention to it.
Yeah, keep an eye on it. I still see tents under the bridge going to, I don't know what the road is, going to the hospital, yes, over the first bridge there, there's tents, tents under there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, maybe they cleared them out then.
Even if they came back.
I, I, yeah, I don't think so, I, hopefully they remediate that, but they, they're going to go someplace else then.
I know that the cleanup that we did, and I've, I've heard from a couple of people since then too, the businesses there really appreciated that from the county doing that. So anyway, when it comes to projects, you know, we, we do have the budget coming up, there is a considerable amount of dollars that need to fund some of these capital projects that we got to get done, and we'll be talking about that during the budget hearing process, but unless you've got questions, specific questions about any of these projects, or any of the correspondence that I've had most recently with, with Cal Fire and the jail project, feel free to ask.
So there's a number of them, like Sheriff's Office Roof, maybe you covered it, but CAC downspouts that are not funded.
Nope.
So, so what are we doing?
I'm, I'll bring you some recommendations, and we'll talk about it at the budget workshop.
The CAC downspouts, it's not that big of a price tag, but the jail office roof, or Sheriff's Office and Jail Roof is pretty big.
It is, that roof was put on in nineteen eighty-four, had a twenty-year life, so you can do the math, at about thirty-nine years, it's, so when you do a flat.
It's gotten twice, twice the amount of life out of it.
Yes, you have. But the perlite is, is gone, and the fasteners are gone, so it's, it's, got to get it replaced.
It's there.
It's there. Yep, you're worn out.
On the IT leak, this wasn't a waterfall we had years ago, was it?
No.
Oh, that one from the second floor, there, yeah, sorry, keep going.
No, that was from the, the drainage, that's the downspout issue, actually. Everything bled off into those balconies, which created that leak.
The pigeons and.
Now, this is the, if the board remembers, maybe a couple of you remember, we had an agreement with Roble in construction over a leak over the IT area in that balcony, they gave us a two-year warranty, and I, I want to say, two years and one day, it started to leak again, and it leaks every once in a while, we can't figure out where that water's coming from, so the only way to resolve it now, we've removed the, the internal sheet rock to try to find it, it's coming from the brick side. So I've avoided, as long as I can, I think, to, to remove that thin brick, because that's going to be a process, but there's a, there's a breach somewhere in the den's glass and the, and the flashing behind the thin brick there.
Okay.
Yeah. Not, not fun.
Can you explain on the jail project where we're at right now with the State Fire Marshal? Made any headway at all?
Interestingly enough, this morning, Karen handed me this first delinquent notice.
Delinquent?
I don't know if, if that's in response to that letter or not, but I will be calling them, and then sending that letter to whoever wrote this to me, to say, look, you, you haven't justified, you can't just bill me frivolously like you have. There, there's no, there's, if you've seen the billing, what does that mean?
Again, they're the state.
Yeah. Now, we've been through this before, Chuck and I have actually been through this before with, with certain things, whether it was homicide case reimbursement or whatever, at some point, I would imagine they're going to say, you just got to pay it, but I'm going to do everything I can to at least have some justification, because when you, they have looked at this project, and looked at this project, and looked at this project over and over again, and they continue to bill it for us to that, and it's just ludicrous.
Called budget augmentation.
Well, the day that we were down there in October with the architect, they literally had ten people come into the room for this project, and two on Zoom. I'm sorry, but that's just absurd, that, I don't need that many inspectors, and all they're inspecting is just fire, remember? They're not inspecting the CBC stuff for the project, the project's fourteen thousand square feet, or, it's a, it's a small project, and I can't get forward, move forward with them, with the project until we get through the clearance with State Fire Marshal.
No problem. Question, John, how long before documents will go stale, environmental documents and stuff?
How long, repeat that?
How long before some of the, the documents will go stale? Have to redo them?
Uh, SEQA's done, we're, we're cleared to do that.
That's part of the problem, because we, we got approval before we got held up by SEQA, so then the approval, the State Fire Marshal, approval went stale, and that's why we're back in their court.
Yeah, how many more, anything else like that?
Well, we have the, the other P, that's the State Fire Marshal side, then we have BSCC and State DGS that reviewed our, our map. Chuck was part of that meeting. It's a very, it's a one-page map that gave two easements, well, they wanted an easement for the driveway, the state did, and they wanted an easement for the power coming off of eighty-eight to the project, but they left one little caveat out there, and it was this, the drainage pipe that, that's on the sheriff's, or on that property there that drains into that creek. I still, it's, I think it's six weeks now, I still don't have an answer back from the Department of Finance to give it back to BSCC or DGS on whether or not the easements that we've shown are approved or not. I mean, it's a simple, it would literally take somebody two minutes to, to say, yeah, that's what we were talking about in a meeting, approve it, and I'm going on six weeks here.
I was at a meeting last week and talked to Oscar Vegas, you know who Oscar is?
I know Oscar, yes.
From BSCC, Board of State Community Corrections, and he gave me the name of, forwarded the name of their interim county administrative officer, have you, did you receive that yet or not?
Yeah, I, I did, you, you said, thank you for that, I was out Friday, I was out yesterday, but yeah, it's one of the.
Get in touch with him, because he said he was able to negotiate through the State Fire Marshal's office, so maybe he can give you some information, how to make that easier.
Yeah, straight.
Yeah, you never know, it's a, it's an opportunity, so they were able to make headway.
I got it, I, I'll, I'll call him.
Any other comments? Any public comments?
So if it's okay with you guys, I, I plan on giving you an update at the end of the year, just because we're awful busy. I'd also like to remind the board that your facilities department is supposed to be facilities, maintenance, but we are heavily, heavily involved in projects, so it takes time away from other things too.
Hey, John, on the Sheriff's Office sewer system problem, I guess the inmates keep flushing stuff down. Have we ever offered some kind of incentive to the inmates not to do this?
Sure, walk up there and talk to the SO anytime and see if you can encourage that, but I, yeah, no.
No, I mean, would they get like, you know, they, they, they want to buy stuff or get stuff, right?
They do, they, there's been, I don't know what the current practice is, but in the past, they'll shut down that commissary, you know, but sometimes it's hard to tell who did what in their, in the pipe, right? I will say.
I understand that, but if they collectively, you know, don't, you know, mess with the system or clog it up, then they all benefit.
Yep, I don't disagree, you got.
Oh, but I mean, they would get like some kind of treat or incentive, wouldn't that be cheaper?
If, I think you need to.
I know some people might be opposed to that from, from a principle standpoint, but if it costs us a lot less money than having.
How would I say this delicately, the, the character of individual that is in the jail currently is probably not too.
Not going to care.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know if I'd agree with that in any way, that's like giving drugs to drug people in San Francisco.
No, it's not.
And they're going to.
Drugs.
I will say that AWA, I did let Chuck know this, AWA with their, their maintenance staff has been a great help to our maintenance staff too, over the recent months, with those types of things.
Do we have like a set of filters, is there a way to filter some of this stuff, or no?
Uh, no.
I would compliment you and, you and your staff on, most of these projects you've completed under budget. I realize the library is totally out of your control, but on a good number of these others, you've completed them under budget, so.
They all have been, the library was the only caveat to that, and the board chose to do that, if you remember on bid day and all, you guys chose to do that, so that's fine, we just got to backfill the other stuff, in fact, all of the projects have been under budget, except for the library project, so six out of the seven there, I think, if I remember correctly.
We should even give you less money next time.
Okay.
All right. Hey, John, a quick question, up there at the Vets Hall, you're talking about making like a back way to get out, is that, look, they're going to cut some trees down, that's just kind of like a little rough little driveway there really to get around?
There's a, so on the backside of the Vets Hall there, it, it goes into a hole, basically, and people have difficulty getting out of there in the winter time, and so what they do is they make their own route. So instead of making their own route to drive where we don't want them to drive, if we give them a little path out, it would take care of those problems.
I think I saw that, should probably make it a little bit wider if you're going to do it, just a little bit.
Okay, sure.
The only thing they did is cut the trees, so they haven't really done any of the rest.
They're, they're going to want to cut a few more trees.
But these, you know, the, the septic system's failing back there, so, and it's just a supply pipe coming out of the septic tank, so it'll be a two-for-one type of a fix.
Oh, I forgot to mention that too, so that leach field's got to get, we got to, that's on our target list too, we got to do that leach field up there.
Is it the leach field, or just, I thought it was just a supply tube?
I, I think it's going to be the leach field too.
Okay.
But until we get into it, I don't know, another, another project. Okay, all right, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to item five F, discussion of possible action regarding the removal of the storm debris from Pioneer Park relative to the December twenty-one storm event. Who wants to lead on this? Richard, come on up.
I thought you were asking.
Your name is from.
Okay.
I put it there, you get to take it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, as you recall, kind of a really brief recap, and we had this, this storm back in December, late December, produced a lot of wet and heavy snow, and it caused a lot of damage as far as broken limbs and, and trees, especially up in our upper reaches of the, of the county, and so, it was, you know, the, during the month of February, the, the Pioneer Park was open, and people were able to bring in storm damage from their properties there, as, to give them an, an opportunity to be able to get rid of that stuff, where they may not be able to, to do so otherwise. So now we got a large pile of brush sitting on the lower ballfield at Pioneer Park. We were given the task of trying to find a solution to how to eradicate that. I went through and tried, and made some contacts with various local contractors that would be able to do this type of work of this magnitude, to, to gauge their interests. I was given a name of a couple of people, so I followed up with that regard. It's, it's not a job for a regular guy with a chipper and a one-ton, chipper box on his truck, you know, one-ton truck to do, this is a large job. There's an estimated a thousand tons of, of material up there, and is outlined in, in the memo, the contacts that I made, and the services that would be provided by each of those contacts, and a, and a rough estimate of cost to do the work, and, if you want, I can step through each one, or I can just kind of cut to the chase where I think where we're at.
I think board's already gone through the materials, so we can cut to the chase, I believe.
Sure, I, you know, the, there is one, there's one estimate and proposal.
All right, we'll go to item five F, discussion of possible action regarding the removal of the storm debris from Pioneer Park relative to the December twenty-one storm event. Who wants to lead on this? Richard, come on up.
I thought you were just gonna-
Your name is from.
Okay. Let out.
I put it there, you get to take it out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, a- as you recall, kind of a really brief, uh, recap, and we had this, this storm back in December, late December, produced a lot of wet and heavy snow, and it caused a lot of, uh, damage as far as broken limbs and, and trees, especially up in our upper reaches of the, of the county. And so, um, it was, uh, you know, the, um, during the month of February, the, the Pioneer Park was open and people were able to bring in, um, storm damage from their properties there, um, as, to give them an, an opportunity to be able to get rid of that stuff where they may not be able to, to do so otherwise. So now we got a large pile of brush sitting on the lower ballfield at, at Pioneer Park. Um, uh, we were given the task of trying to find a solution to how to eradicate that. Um, I went through and tried, and made some contacts with, uh, various local, um, contractors that would be able to do this type of work of, of this magnitude, uh, to, um, uh, gauge their interests. I was given the name of a couple of people, so I followed up with that regard. Um, it's, it's not a job for a regular guy with a chipper and a one-ton, a chipper box on his truck, you know, one-ton truck to do. This is a large job. Uh, there's a estimated a thousand tons of, of, uh, material up there, and, um, is about outlined in, in the, in the memo, uh, the contacts that I made and the services that would be provided by each of those contacts and, uh, and a rough estimate of cost to do the work. And, um, uh, if you want, I can step through each one, or I can just kinda cut to the chase where I think where we're at.
I think, uh, board's already gone through the materials, so we can cut to the chase, I believe.
Sure. I, you know, the, there is one, um, there's one, uh, estimate and proposal to do the work, be able to take the material, grind it up, and haul it out, um, and also clean up the field once it's all done, so that it's kind of a, I'll use a turn, turnkey, if, if that works, um, come in, take care of it, and it's done. All the other, um, proposals had loose ends for us to take care of, either we'd have to do the trucking, we'd have to come back and clean it up, it just, it's, it would be something that would get strung out. Um, this, this, um, one of, we're looking at, uh, it's, the timing is such, the contractor has a pending job of, of which he's, has this equipment to be mobilized and to go to, and this would be kind of a stopping point on that, on that journey. So we'll be, there's some economies of scale we're taking advantage of, there's some costs that are, we won't be incurring, cause it's kind of part of the bigger operation that he's got, um, moving afterwards, so, um, I guess what I'm trying to say is if this job stood alone for him, the, the costs that would be incurred would be higher. We're, we're in a, in a, in a, we're in a unique advantage to, to take advantage of, of that situation. And I, from what I can tell, this would be the cleanest and quickest way for us to get rid of the material that's up there. I know there's, as you all are aware, there is concern with the residents up there, um, this brush pile is not green anymore, it is truly a brown pile, and, uh, they're worried about a potential fire danger, um, obviously when it's sitting there by itself, it's not a problem, but everyone worried about, you know, you get some crazies walking around or whatever, think they're gonna have some fun, and let's have a bonfire, and they're just afraid that that, something like that could happen, it would endanger that whole area.
We got, we got a letter from property owners up there, probably with about, I don't know, close twenty names on it, expressing that same concern.
Yeah, yeah, that was delivered this morning.
Um, I talked to Mur Vasini, he, he's okay. He says the, uh, Sierra Yard Supply and Equipment, Southwood Trucking, they're, they're good people, and, uh, he understands probably the best way to go for us.
Yeah.
And he really doesn't like pine needles.
Well, that's the thing, too. I mean, some people will not process that stuff, it clogs their equipment, and as far as using it as ground material, it's not good, it doesn't break up well and, and such, so, um, that's part of it. In this case, this stuff gets hauled off, um, it gets, goes down to a, um, a biofuel plant down in the valley, so it, you know, it becomes, uh, you know, it doesn't go to waste, I guess, that's a one-way put in it.
Okay. Questions?
Yeah, I've, I've got one, um, they're having estimates for about a thousand ton, looks like for more than one person.
Yeah. Which I found to be an interesting, uh, coincidence, I mean, I, I don't know, these people-
Yeah.
-talk to each other, so I, I feel that's a, a pretty solid number. I mean, it's, it's an estimate, I mean, they're visualizing it, looking at it, they, they look just, you know, these two people have done this stuff for a living, uh, is it a thousand, is it nine hundred, is it eleven hundred?
Two, two of them said a thousand.
Yeah.
They're separate estimates.
Right, so it's gonna be in that ballpark, it's not gonna be two thousand.
Right.
You know, and it's not gonna be five hundred.
It is less than a thousand, though, could that conceivably be less, or are we set once we contract this out?
Um, the way this, has, um, Southwick has done this, it's a cost per ton. The, we would, uh, agree on a, um, a, a weighing location for it, so you pay for what gets hauled out. Uh, if it's eight hundred tons, that we pay for, if it's eleven hundred tons, that's what we pay for.
That including, uh, the chipper?
Yes, that, this is, that's, that cost includes the, the grinding, the hauling, the cleanup, everything.
When you say the cleanup, is that to like a what degree, basically?
Well, what I was concerned about is you bring someone in, they, they do this work, they grind and chip, and they haul out, and you're gonna have miscellaneous debris laying around, I mean, it's, that's just the way it is. He would actually come in with a tractor with a rake and, and, and clean up the area so that asbestos can be, uh, cleaned up, so then not, we're not left with a lot of miscellaneous debris to, to haul out of there. And he's also, you know, there's a few items in that pile that he's not gonna be able to process with the grinder, he's gonna haul those out as well, so. Um, it's, it's, like I say, it's turnkey from our standpoint, the other things I looked at, oh, we're gonna have this leftover, we're gonna have that leftover, kind of nice neat package.
Further questions? Wait till you look up, otherwise you're still thinking.
Oh, no, so, um, basically this would be like, like a continuing emergency from the winter storms in? Okay.
Okay. Any public comments?
We do have a comment via Zoom.
Banco, you wanna comment, too? I'm gonna take in the room first. Jamie, come on up to this mic. Thank, thank you.
Hi, Jamie Labanco, District Five, Fiddle Town resident. I was just curious, is there FEMA money or something in the budget that's helping cover this?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes, okay.
Oh, yes, money, you know, because we did a state of emergency.
Okay.
And so they'll pay seventy-five percent, we're hoping, we just don't know when that's gonna happen, so that's the reason it's funding, we'll have to come out of contingency first.
Okay.
And then we'll be paying, paying twenty-five percent. But I will be trying to get, see if I can get the airport to pay for that, part of that twenty-five down the road, um, because, um, the other option, everybody would've been burning this material up the up country, cause the transfer station that's in Pine Grove could not have handled the amount of material that is sitting on this baseball field.
Okay, thank you.
But this represents a huge hazard right now, if it doesn't get taken care of immediately. You can see by this picture, Jamie, how brown it is, so it's in really in bad shape.
Yeah, and I, I recall the Air Quality Board being involved in this discussion in the last couple meetings, so I was curious how they would contribute if that was a possibility.
I'm hoping, you know, we'll have to bring it to the board and find out. We weren't sure of costs during the last couple board meetings, it was not until now we found out the actual, we suspected costs are gonna be.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And we have somebody at Zoom?
Uh, yes, Ms. Grandboy, please go ahead when ready.
Good afternoon, this is Cindy Grandboys. At, uh, the last meeting, Supervisor Oneto brought up the potential of a fire tent, uh, renting or hiring CAL FIRE, was that investigated, which would mitigate the Air Resource Board's concerns?
Yes, from, from my standpoint, it's kinda like, well, that was like a portable incinerator that shows up there, and, um, from what I could tell, it, it certainly would be an effective way to take care of it, it seemed that it would take, um-
Like an air curtain burner, but I hear they don't like pine needles too much, I think.
That, and it's not a quick process, unless you had a lot of units up there, it takes a while, you gotta feed it and let it burn down, and you gotta re-feed it, it would be, it would take a long time, it would be somewhat labor-intensive as far as getting through the pile. I would say if we had a smaller pile, or if this was in place at the beginning, then you could feed it as you accumulated, um, material, then you can somewhat keep up with it, but given the amount that's there, I think it'd be somewhat of an overwhelming task to use that equipment, uh, I'm not disparaging the equipment, but it, it does have some limitations as far as its expediency and efficiency. Um, it burns stuff clean and smokeless, um, so that, that's a real positive, but I think what we have in front of us is, I, I don't want, I don't know how long it would take, but it seems to me it would take a while to, to, to use this equipment, and, um, you know, you're talking about manpower and such associated with it, so, um-
Cindy, does that answer your question?
Well, it does, and I'd like to add the comment that I appreciate the due diligence in researching and getting more information and having more contractors or bids, so that when the decision is made on which way you're gonna go, as much information has been received as possible, so thank you for not making the decision last time and bringing it back again.
All right, thank you.
Supervisors, um, there's, there's some findings that are in your, uh, in the staff memo, um, and, uh, to, since this is related to the, the emergency and, uh, the declared emergency, um, what, what, what's required is that we need a four-fifths vote, and, um, and the findings, um, need to be incorporated into the minutes, so if you can just make sure that when the minutes are, uh, the clerk can make sure that when the minutes are done, these written findings, statute requires that they be incorporated into the minutes, it's just, it's something in the code.
That be, need to be part of?
Well, you can-
Motion?
The, the motion can refer to the findings, but as long as they, as long as it's clear that they need to end up in the written, um, ma- meeting minutes, I think we're covered.
All right.
Don't mind, Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion. Uh, authorize staff to enter into contract with Sierra Yard Supply and Equipment, Southwood Trucking for the removal and disposal of the organic debris at Pioneer Park, and the board finds that, that the emergency will not, uh, permit a delay in resolution from a competitive solution for bids, and that the action is necessary to respond to the emergency declared on December thirtieth.
Second. Under discussion?
Moved and seconded and under discussion.
Now, that, would that be up to ninety thousand dollars and looking at a, a price of seventy-five dollars per ton?
Yeah, that's the estimated cost per ton, it'd be in that, in that range, I just need to, um-
Cause I don't wanna just give a bid, just up to ninety thousand, because you probably hit that.
The estimate was actually seventy-five.
So, or per ton, yeah.
Yeah, so it would-
Oh, seventy-five thousand dollars, and for a thousand tons.
Yeah.
Seventy-five dollars per ton.
Just adding a little contingency.
Yeah, we, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Work?
Yeah, okay.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Most carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you.
Wendy, Richard, when do you think this beable starts?
Um-
And we'd had a little bit of weather up there, and I'm just kinda-
Right, I mean, we got, we got some contractual stuff to, to work out with him, but, you know, I think the contractor is ready to work.
Okay.
Um, and, uh, once he gets started, I think it's about a two-week period, that'll be, everything will be taken care of.
One, one more thing, too, you might wanna look at, um, just have a little oversight that, uh, I don't know how you determine or word it, that we're not, that he's not hauling off, best amounts of dirt. Dirt's really heavy per ton. You know, a ton of dirt's a ton of dirt, but if you start getting a lot of dirt and rock mixed in with that, you could, you could hit it, uh, some pretty high limits pretty quick.
Yeah, they, just for your information, the, one of the things I was told for all these pile mess plants, they get any dirt, they wanna refuse, um, loads, so they wanna try to be as clean as possible. Those were-
I, I understand that, but I know sometimes that's been known to happen at times, and I don't wanna be paying the whole excess dirt.
Sure.
Okay, got it? All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
And I move to item five G, discussion of possible action regarding Caltrans District Ten fuel reduction activities along Highway eighty-eight.
That's probably me. Um, what just goes back to is Caltrans is doing some, um, oh, I guess, fuel reduction, hazard reduction work along Highway eighty, which I think what they're doing is a real good project, and two of my friends took exception to what Caltrans was doing up there, because I believe they didn't, I found it kinda incongruous, really, that Caltrans did not have the proper permits from the state. And, you know, I don't think they had forced her doing oversight anyway, so they went and it sounded like temporarily stopped the project or whatever, but I think the project overall, what Caltrans is doing up there is really important for fire safety, so I'd, I'd like to send a letter from the board stating, maybe, hey, we understand you had a few hiccups and maybe, uh, maybe they should do a little better on that, but mainly that we support their efforts to make the evacuation corridor safer, and I would love, I don't know if you could put something in there that it would, um, it'd be nice if Caltrans could lobby to, uh, have fire, fire reduction activities, uh, maybe exempt from SEQA, but they probably, that may, that may not be, that may not be doable. But basically, like I said in the letter, supporting their, um, efforts overall along that, on the highway.
You can read that letter?
Yeah.
And I'll take a look at it, but, um, this is somewhat similar to activities they were doing along Michigan Bar Road or one oh-four, remember a couple years back where they had, uh, they didn't do environmental analysis that like everybody else would have to do, but they called it, I think, a programmatic, programmatic environmental process, where they did it as a whole and not just individually to one area. So they were going into areas with, uh, what could be perceived as red-legged frogs and burners pools and things like that, but they got away from it because they, they did their environmental document to cover everything. Nobody else can do that, but they did it.
But no, I think, but overall, I, I don't wanna seem to stop clearing the fuels along the highways, because it's, you ever get a fire up here, I mean, look at what happened in other communities, people are driving out through flames, their taillights are melting, people are dying, so, um, the more they cut along that highway, probably the better.
Well, and my wife and I took a drive up this week and, uh, last weekend, and there are a lot of dead trees right along the road, again.
There is.
They've been taking out quite a few, though, too.
They've been taking out quite a few, so hopefully-
What I've seen.
But there's still, you know, some up there, the corridor.
It's not just dead, dead trees, it's just, it's just vegetation is so thick and so overgrown, I mean, if you get a fire in there, it'd be nice to have that vegetation pushed back, so maybe, uh-
Okay, does the board wanna, uh, have this letter come back, or are they okay with having Supervisor Oneto pin it, may review it and send it?
Yeah, that's fine, um, if that works for me, that'll be my motion.
Okay, okay. Moved by Supervisor, act seconded by Supervisor Brown to do just what I stated, write it, all review it, and, uh-
Yeah, that'll work, I'll make it short and sweet.
Okay, um, any public comment? Any Zoomers? No, all right, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, most carries. Down to the minutes, I had some minor corrections that I've submitted.
You, too. I make a motion to approve the minutes, uh, with those corrections.
Second?
Moved and seconded to approve the minutes of March twenty-second, twenty-two. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, most carries. With that, I think we are finished today, so thank you.
We're going back to closed session.
Oh, we have closed session, uh, so we will, the board will convene back in the closed session.